Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're fine. You're you're good.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. The Capitol has a little bit of a dead sound to it on a plastic cable, but there we go. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Waterborne Meeting Number 723. This is the work section. It's originating in Samma Sacagawea Interpretive Cultural and Educational Dinner, and we welcome all those that are here in person and those who were participating online. First item on the agenda is roll call. Are we ready to do roll call? Well, that's good. Okay.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Goanna.
Here.
Mr. Gill.
Here.
Mr. Rickman.
Here.
Mr. Olstead.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Vanstone.
Here.
And Chairman Rabel.
Here. Thank you, Jennifer. The next item of business is the Land High Basin Settlement Status Report.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn the podium over to Amy Castle, and she is going to give a status report on the Land High Settlement Agreement. And then there are a number of other presenters on this topic.
Situated here.
Oh. Can we maybe turn off the the expert lights? Turn on still.
Uh, yeah.
Yes. If we move our chairs over this way, is that a problem? So we can see the screen?
They can move.
Right. I I think that'd be fine if you can find more more banner CDs that allows you to watch what's going on. There's a fire. We'd like you to get out of the way.
I thought it was the other branches or right to the door there.
Okay.
Okay. Ready. Uh. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Amy Castle. I'm a project manager with the Atahoc Department of Water Resources and I have been charged with managing the implementation of the Land High Basin Settlement Agreement. So this morning, we're going to dedicate a little time to updating the board. Um, myself and quite a few other presenters, including uh, three water users in the Land High River Basin are going to provide updates to you. So, uh, the Land High River Basin Settlement Agreement negotiations began around June of two thousand and eighteen, and the stakeholders met periodically for several years to negotiate the terms of the agreement. Um, the agreement was ultimately executed on February twenty fourth of two thousand and twenty-two, and the agreement set forth a process, a legal process, for irrigators in the Land High River Basin that divert high flow under the Land High Basin General Provision to perfect their water right for this high-flow use. Parties to the agreement include the Land High Basin Water Users, the Idaho Water Resource Board, and, of course, uh, the Idaho Department of Fish and Game and the Idaho Office of Species Conservation. Uh, participation in the agreement is voluntary and allows water user, user, users to continue to divert water under their general provision, high-flow use, if they choose not to obtain a protectable water right. But it's definitely in their best interest to obtain a protectable water right. Um, there are a lot of elements of this agreement, so we'll just kind of start running through them. One of them is the resolution of state and private protests. So there were fourteen applications for new irrigation water rights on the Falling Creeks, Big Timber Creek, Little Timber Creek, Mill Creek, Eighteen Mile Creek, and Big Eight Mile Creek. So all of those are in the map um, on the right. Uh, twelve of those applications have been resolved. So, um, twelve of those fourteen applications have issued, the department has issued permits um, two remain pending due to, uh, right-of-way issues for delivery across federal land, but the board, um, has resolved twelve of those fourteen. Um, another element of the of the settlement agreement was, of course, the ability to ta- obtain a protectable high-flow water right. We are calling these water rights stream flow maintenance water rights. So the Land High Irrigators who hold irrigation water rights agreed in the adjudication and divert high flow um, may file, uh, for a permit for stream flow maintenance to convert that high-flow use to a protectable water right um, on or before July first of two thousand and twenty-four. So less than a year away. Clock is ticking. Um. So I got some stats from the department. Uh, one hundred and twenty-five applications have been submitted. Um, most of those one hundred and twenty-five applications will end up being resubmitted under the Land High Irrigation District filing. Um, so in this map, I'm trying to show you here. Oops. Wrong pointer. Um. The red outline in the map is the Land High Irrigation District. So, um, water users within that district are going to file under the Land High Irrigation District collectively. And to date, about two hundred and ten applications, um, have been prepared by IDWR. Um. There are a number of applications that have already been submitted that are outside of the Land High Irrigation District. So those fall in those kind of upper Land High Basin. Uh, seven of those applications have been submitted and advertised. I believe one was protested. But ultimately, the the applications, um, but like I said, the district is working, the Land High Irrigation District is working with the department to, um, prepare and submit that filing under the Land High Irrigation District. Uh, one challenge, and and I suspect Carl Ellsworth will speak to this. The filing fee will be quite expensive. Um, so that's one challenge they're trying to sort through right now. Um, because the department obviously won't process any applications that haven't, um, submitted also their fees. And I believe um, the fees are going to be over a hundred thousand dollars, but maybe Carl can speak to that more directly. So again, these have to be submitted by July first of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, another element of the Land High Basin Settlement uh, is the formation of steering and technical committees. So back in on March thirty-first, I did present several resolutions to the board, and they were adopted. Um. One was a steering committee charter and a steering committee membership list. And so the purpose of the steering committee charter was to establish, first of all, establish the committee. And the committee's, uh, job, so to speak, is to facilitate co- cooperation between the Water Board and the water users in the implementation of the agreement. Um, membership of the charter or of the agree, um, steering committee, uh, there are two members of the Land High Irrigation District, two representatives from the Upper Land High Basin. So those are those tributaries that fall outside of the Land High Irrigation District. One representative of the Idaho Department of Fish and Game and one representative of the Idaho Offices Office of Species Conservation. And then we have one representative from the Idaho Water Board who serves as the chair, and that is, um, Board Member McMahon. Um, we held our first meeting on May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three at the Community Center in Lederer. And we have C, two, three, four, five, at least five members of those steering committee was the chair, of course, um, in attendance today. The way to represent the steering committee. Um, also, on March thirty-first, the board adopted a resolution, um, for what's called the Land High River at McFarland Minimum Stream Flow. As part of the Land High Settlement, um, there were a total of five new minimum stream flows, uh, created in the Land High River Basin. One of them is the Land High River at McFarland. We will go see that today on our tour so you get to see it in person. Um. So the McFarland Minimum Stream Flow has a total diversion rate of four hundred and twenty CS, CFS, and the period of use is three fifteen to, so basically, March fifteenth to July sixth. Um, the quantification point for this minimum stream flow is a gauge. It's a USGF gauge um, on the Land High River, um, near the McFarland, uh, campground. Uh, so what is the point of the McFarland Minimum Stream Flow? So the goal is to flush the overlying fine sediment of the armored Land High River stream bed in this reach and to mobilize stream bed materials to restore fish habitat. The McFarland Minimum Stream Flow can only be exercised, um, two out of every five years. And the duration of this exercise is three days or seventy-two hours. And it will occur between March fifteenth and July sixth. Um, the goal is to time the whole flow, as I like to call it, um, to occur as close as possible to the peak runoff of the Land High River. So timing it with peak snowmelt runoff. Um, so water users who seek to protect their hypo-practice through the stream flow maintenance water right um, will have a condition on their water right if you are upstream of the McFarland Minimum Stream Flow. They will have a condition that states that they will restrict their delivery for seventy-two hours. Um, the two out of every five years. Um. So this will be a condition on those stream flow maintenance water rates. Uh. The, uh, the board did also approve the flow protocol for the minimum stream flow. So this is basically a flow chart that was designed by Carter Borden with Centered Consulting. Carter's been working in the Land High Basin for literally decades. Um, he's amongst other things an engineer, hydrogeologist. But he, he worked, um, with us for the last couple of years to develop his fro- flow protocol to basically um, come up with the criteria and parameters to exercise for when the board should exercise their minimum stream flow at Farland. Um. So specifically, the criteria check looks at a specific snowtell site in the Upper Land High Basin. It's called Beagle Spring Springs. And we look at, um, the precipitation to date for the water here. So on April fifteenth, April fifteenth, there's a criteria check, May first and May fifteenth. And on April fifteenth, we look at Beagle Springs, and if the the water here to date, precipitation to date is nine inches or higher, then the minimum stream flow exercise is favorable. So we move on to May first. If at May first, the precipitation to date, um, is nine point five inches or higher, then we move on to May fifteenth criteria check. And, um, ultimately, on May fifteenth, Beagle Springs Snowtell Site, uh, was fifteen point one inches. So we were well above, um, what the parameters were for what we deemed to be a successful, um, exercise of the minimum stream flow. So when we met on May seventeenth, the steering committee met, we reviewed this flow chart, we looked at the Beagle Springs snowtell site data. And this was a pilot year because we obviously don't have all those stream flow maintenance water rates in place yet. They're still being processed by the department. So we kind of had to, and this was we relied obviously very heavily on the water users who know the basin and would be participating in this. We estimated that we could have a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five CFS of additional flow that could be restricted and help meet um, the minimum stream flow at McFarland. We were targeting not four twenty, we were targeting two hundred and fifty CFS. And the reason for that is because, um, in two thousand and twenty-two, there was three hundred and fifty CFS measured at the McFarland Campground. And there was some subbing of water. This is a BLM campground. Like I said, we'll see it today on the tour. Um, there's some subbing of water in the campground. There was one location where it was bank full in the river, and there was a little bit of surface flow. And so we felt, you know, we don't want to flood McFarland, so our target was three hundred and fifty CFS, similar to what we saw, conditions we saw in two thousand and twenty-two. So that was the goal. And, uh, we felt confident that there was enough, um, water that could be delivered. And and this is just their high flow. This is not decreed rights. Decreed rights stay on through this exercise is only your high flow rights. Um. So again, May seventeenth, we met, um, the goal was three hundred and fifty CFS. Um, this is a quick, this is a snapshot of the, um, Beagle Springs. We're at fifteen point one inches. So uh, we're feeling confident. We had we're meeting the criteria. Uh. So Carl Ellsworth and I, we went on the Voice of the Valley, which is a local uh, radio program that just provides information on events and local happenings in the Samma River community. And we kind of, I don't know, ten minutes, talked about what it was, what we were trying to do. We didn't have the exact dates yet. Because it's it's tricky to know exactly when you're going to have peak snowmelt runoff. Um, but we basics, basically said, you know, it's going to be in the next week to ten days. And, um, this is explained what it was, et cetera. And then we was looking at flows at McFarland. The exercise was scheduled for June ninth through the twelfth. Um. So on June eighth, I received a call from a landowner who is about four and a half miles downstream of McFarland. So, uh, they were concerned about flooding to their property. And so I met, um, the landowner's son-in-law, um, at the property and and we walked around, and at this point, McFarland was pushing about two hundred CFS. And, you know, walking around the property and seeing that the Land High was bank full and they had a, they have a, um, shed, they had a small confined animal feeding operation right on the river. Um, they have a home, uh, very close to the river. Anyway, long story short, is walking around the property came pretty clear that additional flow, um, through the exercises in McFarland right, uh, could indeed, um, would would result in more flow potentially, um, coming out of the banks, um, at this location. So then I met with the the landowner and we talked about it. Um, you know, they see flooding frequently. I mean, they are in the flood plain. Um, so they see flooding almost every year. Um, so we talked about that and, uh, basically her comment was, well, if it happens naturally, then it is what it is. But if it's intentional, then are you going to pay for any damages? And I said, well, I obviously, I can in no way, um, guarantee any amount of compensation. Um, so long story short, the exercise is canceled. Um, this was very disappointing to the water users. Um, this was a pilot year. This was a good opportunity to kind of test the water, so to speak. Um, hit that three, see if we can hit the three hundred and fifty CFS target. Um. And we had everybody on board. I almost felt, I felt like people were actually excited to try it. But because of this potential liability issue, and I I don't have the answer, and and we, you know, we're going to have to work with our legal experts in Live Bar and and Megan Carter to to, um, sort through that issue of legal liability. So anyway, it was, it was canceled, and that was very disappointing to all of us, but it seemed like the prudent thing at the time. And, um, it's just one of those challenges we're going to have to sort through moving forward. Um, but this is just the graph, the hydrograph of, um, basically on June ninth, we were at two hundred and twenty-one CFS. So if our estimations were right, you know, we could could potentially get another hundred and twenty-five CFS, we would have, we would have been right about there, not three hundred and fifty CFS range. So um, disappointing, but you know, the the other lesson, I think, I took away from from this pilot year, this first attempt, was uh, Voice of the Valley is probably not reaching a big enough audience because a lot of people don't listen to the radio, yourself included. So, um, we need to figure out a better notification system um, for all of the Land High River Basin, so not just the water users in the Upper Land High that are participating and restricting the delivery, because it's actually a pretty small portion of the water users in the Land High, but the the all the water users and just landowners in the Land High River Basin. Oh, and this, this is just the map. I just kind of wanted to show. So this is the gauge. This is our quantification point. This is where we were trying to hit our target of about three hundred and fifty CFS. And approximately four, four and a half miles downstream of that location is the property that that lodged the complaint. So that was one of the minimum stream flows that was, um, created through through the Land High River Basin Settlement. Um, uh, my colleague John Lefredo will speak to, uh, the Bohannon and Canyon and Big Timber Creek minimum stream flows. We have, the board has active water transactions on those creeks. Um, I've already obviously spoken about the Land High River at McFarland. The other minimum stream flow that was created, um, as part of the settlement is the Hayden Creek minimum stream flow. And this gauge just kind of shows you, uh, what the flows were this year. So the minimum stream flow on Hayden, March fifteenth to July thirty versus sixty CFS. Now, it was not met in early season, but that's just natural base flow. I mean, people are not irrigating that early. Um, so that's just natural flow. Um, and then obviously flows came up quite significantly, um, and we're remaining that sixty CFS. And then around July nineteenth, um, we drop low the minimum stream flow. But coincidentally, July nineteenth is when the Hayden, the Hayden Creek Fire, um, started. Hayden, uh, Hayden Creek Fire, it's not fully contained, um, but it is, I think, believe, I believe. Hayden Creek Fire, it's not fully contained, um but it is, I think, believe, I believe it's eighty percent, eighty-five percent contained. Um, size is about, it's about a twenty-five thousand acre fire. Um, we had some great rain events. Um, in early August and through August, that we're not season-ending events for that fire, but. Close to it. So anyway, I guess, I think anecdotally. Um, you know, it's interesting that that the uh, you know, we really dropped flows right around that. When that fire started and then um by August, as we started to see those rain events that popped back up and we were. We were meeting our minimum stream flow. So that's, that's good. Um, and finally, uh. One of the elements of the settlement was the Lemhi Basin Water Supply Program. So um. The board um has agreed to, as part of the settlement, to look into potential feasibility studies. Um, for water supply in the basin. And um. We have a cloud seeding feasibility study underway and Sarah Teszendorf with the National Center for Atmospheric Research. Will speak to that here shortly. Um, yesterday, we had an opportunity, Wes Hippey and I and John. Lefredo went into the field with a number of water users and looked at potential managed recharge sites. We will go look at one of those this afternoon. So we are starting um, we're looking into opportunities there. And then the final one is surface water storage opportunities and we're also, we'll be investigating that. Um, so that is my portion of. Uh, updates. Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, Amy, are there other properties along Lemhi downstream in the McFarland Gage that are in the floods?
Yes, the answer to that is, is yes.
And have they made communications and have they incurred damage?
Um, Ms. Cole Hanson, the only other um concern I heard. Um, on June eighth was from a landowner that was just downstream of. So basically had the property where the complaint was and then you have a couple of small properties, then Hayden Creek. Comes into Lemhi and then the one, I believe, that's directly downstream of Hayden Creek, they had just planted some grass seed. I believe, and they were concerned about that grass seeding getting flushed out during this exercise. But that was the only other, so that was a property that was, you know, and that could have been times better. Had we known and honestly, had they known that the exercise would be planned.
Okay, board members, other questions?
I have one question.
Okay.
Would this also be, would this have counted or does it count as one of the flushing flow years?
It would have counted, yes.
And will it still count even though?
Yeah, that that that's a question I have. How how are we gonna handle uh this situation? Uh, with regard to fulfilling the commitment to modify events. Do the best in five years.
Yeah.
Which the advisory committee talked about that.
We have not, we have not met since May seventeenth. Um, our plan is, I would like to meet after this board meeting and tour and after you have a lot of these conversations. I think that's a question for the board to answer on. Whether, I mean, we we definitely had all, all the participants. To my knowledge, and and these guys can speak to it, but they were all ready and willing and prepared. To restrict their high flow to meet McFarland's minimum stream flow. So um. It would have counted. I, it would have counted even if we didn't meet it. Because it it's just, it's way too difficult to really know for sure how much we're gonna get and and what the flows are gonna be, quite honestly, but. I think the fact that they were on board and um were willing to do it and um. It it's just a point. So I I guess it's a question for the board as to whether or not. We count this year based on on circumstances that were beyond their control and our control. Or how how we want to do that. But but more importantly, I think we need to work with our legal experts to figure out. What is the board's ultimate liability in a situation like this going forward?
Well, Amy, does this, does this mean that? The minimum stream flow if exercised will always cause flood? Or is there something unique about what happened this year?
Nothing unique. So I would say at this particular property, based on what I saw and I walked around. A fair amount of it. And and as they told me, they flood almost every year. But again, the tolerances, the tolerance changes when it's intentional. Um, if it's just mother nature and a natural occurrence. You know, it is what it is, but when it's an intentional. Restriction of delivery in order to meet a minimum stream flow, then it seems like. The opinion is that uh. If there's dam- damage or perceived damage, they should receive compensation. Or would they receive compensation?
So can, just turn, can the capital be moved back away from willing?
Yes, most definitely.
And if that were to happen with that, you know, it would be. Well, out of bank as well, would you, would the impact be significantly less if we were, if that was done?
Yeah, Mr. Barker, I think that it's it's, but it's basically just the corral that was set up right on. Literally right next to the river. And I think that's, from what I could tell, is something that could be easily moved. They did ask me if we could bring in riprap. Um, in order to protect the driveway and the house. And I said, well, I can't mobilize riprap in four hours, so I, no. Um, so they did offer that idea. Um. I, we talked a lot about maybe just potential restoration of this site, but that's a, that's a very. You know, we'd have to work with other partners in the basin and and um, that that requires a lot of funding and. Um, you know, mobilization of equipment and. Design and plans, and so that's just not something that's going to be, that's going to happen quickly.
Well, yes. So as Ms. Cole Hanson said, there's, or asked, there's probably other properties that would also be flooded by. Exercise and the stream flow.
Yeah, un- unfortunately, Mr. Barker, there there are quite a few properties that are built in the floodplain. Um, so I, there's. There would be other properties that would probably, um, and and I don't know for sure. I just know that when. You know, when we hit really high flows in the Lemhi, there are properties that uh, the river. I don't know if it floods their house per se, but it definitely, you know, floods things, uh, structures on their property, sheds, farms. You know, maybe other corrals um that are that are in the floodplain and built honestly, very, very close to the river. And. You know, the the.
No, um, Christian, we, we roll, so it's. Being marked for the flood insurance program that says that they would not compensate the landowners in the event that the. Then the street flow was being exercised.
Mr. Barker, I, I.
Where's the, where's that decision coming? I mean, I I I would be shocked if they have flood insurance. Like, maybe they do, I don't know. I I, I I think we need to have a conversation and see what. Obligation we have under this minimum stream flow water right to prevent flooding. Um, I I, I think we we need to think this thing's, we're gonna study it. Uh, the other, the other question I have is, is the graph show we were up to about two hundred and twenty CFS there for a period of. Three or four days? Have we seen mobilization of sediment at that flow rate? Is there, is there a possibility we could modify how we operate uh with the minimum string flow? And achieve most, if not all, what we need to do as far as mobilizing sediment with less than four hundred and twenty CFS. I know. We thought four hundred and twenty CFS was a magic door, but if we're out of bank, that water is out of bank, probably.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's a good question. Uh, we were not really at bank full at McFarland. Um, you know, where the gauge is located at two hundred twenty CFS. Um. We probably need to, I I will say that I do think that reach looks like there was some sediment mobilized. Uh, you know, interestingly, we we actually peaked, our peak flow at McFarland was, I believe, April twelfth. Yeah, we had a, I really warmed up and we lost, unfortunately, we lost a lot of um flow and snowpack during that event, but. Um, you know, this, this is, and I talked to Carter Gordon after this all happened and um. You know, like I said, we were only shooting for three hundred fifty CFS because the year prior, you know, there was some subbing, there was. A little bit of surface flow topping the banks at McFarland, so we decided to be cautious and conservative. And just hit that three hundred fifty CFS target. Um, according to Carter's. Uh, research, uh, the four twenty was the ideal to really mobilize and move sediment, so. Probably a better question for him and we probably need to work on getting more measurements in this reach. And start really monitoring um any kind of changes in sediment to see if we can adjust to that flow, but. You know, we already had, obviously, the three fifty is is obviously less than four twenty, but we.
The three fifty would have been out of bank.
Well, I.
I I guess, and and we, we don't have to figure this out this very minute, but we've. Uh, I I guess my question would be for Carter, how much additional benefit is there to go from bank full up to four twenty?
Yeah, okay.
And and if it's just a little bit, then maybe we need to rethink uh going just to bank full.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, and then there may be some subbing, there may be some other things, but. Uh, there there may be a way to accomplish most of what we want to achieve here without the additional exposure. If there is exposure, I I don't think we know whether we have exposure or not. Um, because uh, you you can't force people to divert water uh to prevent flooding and sometimes they do. Um, but uh, we we need, we need to figure out exactly what we stand.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Chairman. So I guess what my takeaway right now from from the board is. We need to consult with with Ann Wybar and and um our legal experts to to look into this directly. And then, and then, yes, um, I will have conversations with Carter Gordon. Um, and I I will, when we go out there today, I can show you guys exactly, because I went out um when it was at three hundred fifty CFS in twenty twenty-two. And I took video and I walked around McFarland and I can show you exactly what was going on and about three hundred fifty CFS out there. And I I personally wouldn't say the campground was flooded. There's a lot of um kind of load, you know, depressions at the campground. That were just, they were subbing up water and raining a lot too, so that was partially contributing to the subbing and. There was just one location where it was just barely bank full and 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 just kind of running into the campground at three fifty. So.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I just wanted to, um, so uh, like I said, we have three water users that want to speak today. It's Carl Ellsworth, Merrill Wheeler and Kurt Fehr. Um, they're, they're gonna give their perceptions of of how the settlement um is going for them. Um, my colleague John Lefredo. Uh, is gonna talk a little bit about um those other minimum stream flows. Um, that were created part of the settlement. Wendy Scobie with the Idaho Department of Fish and Game is gonna talk about um fish greens. The status of implementing fish greens on Big Timber Creek. Uh, David Graybill uh with the department will talk a little bit about administration and distribution. And then, as I mentioned previously, Sarah Teszendorf with um National Center for Atmospheric Research will speak as well. So. Uh, thank you. I appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you, Amy. Is that doing, yeah. Wes is gonna look at. Yeah, this, the internal needs and stuff, there.
There we go.
That works, but we live with that, I think, can't you? Okay, all right, let there be light. Carl.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the board. And I appreciate the opportunity to come. Updates, I guess, a little bit today. Uh, first, I'd like to thank you for all your support and help on this one, I said, we're agreeing with. I think we've done a good thing here. And then it started, uh, I think I'll start with the. Attempt for our flushing flow, uh, because you're on that subject, uh. Water users, uh, we were disappointed that also that we weren't able to exercise a pilot program. Uh, in fact, there's, I believe Kurt and I both had water shut off already. Uh, we were lined up to. Shut down. Well, not only because of what moisture we had, not only our. Stream flow mate, what would have been our stream flow maintenance rights, but some of our regular base rights, uh. So I think Amy is correct, we could have, Amy and I talked a lot, I think we could have reached the three fifty. Uh, not much above that. Uh, Mr. Chairman's point, maybe what we need to do is back up. Start at a lower level, see what kind of flooding we get. Uh, it would have been an ideal year to see what kind of bugs we had. Unfortunately, the first bug. It's off the program, but uh. Anyway, uh, I guess I, I want to give you a little report on Lemhi Irrigation District and uh where we are at. Uh, Lemhi Sub, we're agreeing, but uh she took some of the thunder, uh. Initially, we did get a lot of water rights filed in savings vehicles. After working through that with the department, uh, it became clear that it was gonna be easier and a better job for the. Irrigation District to file those water rights under the irrigation district, uh, basically because there's so many. Diversions that have combined water users on it. Uh. I I think six is twenty-five one users or something like that, uh. So we backed up and decided to have those filed by the irrigation district, uh. Where we're at, Water Department's been a great help, uh, as we got into it, thank goodness for us. Uh, it is a pretty large task. So they do have uh the Lemhi River done, unfortunately, uh. Where we're at right now. When the department did those water rights and we had the same troubles when we filed those individuals. As they filed the entire, they included the base water right in the stream flow maintenance water right. Uh, creates two problems. One, it makes it look like we're filing for a lot more water than we actually are. And number two is we got charged again for our base water right and our stream flow maintenance right. When that was filed. I think we had one individual, not even a large operator, his bill was like nine thousand dollars. Talked to Lacy, we kind of figured that one back out. I think he'll be back down around three thousand dollars. By taking that base water right out and filing it to the irrigation district. Uh, so those are in, but where we're at is uh. One hangup has been getting those files to, basically, our, my water master is gonna do the filings for us. Uh, I talked to her, we finally got that filed where so she can start going through it and removing those base water rights. And then uh, they will be ready to file. Uh, and she thinks she's all ready to go. Well, it shouldn't be too big of a job to get that, uh. And uh, so I, our hopes are by early fall, we can have uh. The Lemhi uh water rights in and then uh hopefully by the first of the year, we can have those. Should the territories off the Lemhi within the irrigation district. Done, uh, the department's working on those, uh. Tributaries now. So we're moving along on here, excuse me, not here as fast as we hope, but we are making progress. Uh, hopefully the deadline will. Get us going a little faster while we get out of uh. Changing water and everything like, hopefully we can, we can move along a little faster on it, uh. I think that's uh our basic update, uh. And Kurt and Merrill are gonna talk about streams outside the irrigation district, so. Thank you, unless you have any other questions, I, uh, board members, is there a question?
How many acres of irrigated have been in the irrigation district?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, or members, I should know that number, but I I I'm going blank right now, uh.
I'll say around twenty thousand.
I used to know that.
So that's a good guess for right now, any any other questions for Mr. Ellsworth? Okay, thank you, Carl. Next, uh, Merrill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and more than should be good day, good to see, and. Want to express our appreciation for the work that you've done in supporting uh creating the Lemp High Settlement here in Lemp High. This is something that we've. A problem we've worked on for probably fifty years and. This creates stability in uh. Those kind of things are valid, I think it helps us say culture as well, I think it also helps us. As we look at our natural resource, true about. Uh, so I do appreciate your comments, you know, as we take a look at what is appropriate question, but we need to. The goals that we are looking for, and I look at uh the year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. We have uh water rights on tributaries that we also operate along the Lemp High River itself and. As I watched the ground and that type of thing during that period of time, I thought that was probably the best action we've had. In a number of years, so I think we can achieve those things, uh. Uh, so, yeah, I I look at it. It gives me peace of mind soon where we are today and what has been done to create what we need here in Lemp High. The, so I don't know a lot more to say than that, but I'll just thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Wheeler?
Well, Chairman, right, what what do you think the flow was in two thousand seventeen?
I agree, we refer that to Amy, do you have?
Uh, at McFarland?
Yes, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
It was well over fourteen.
Yeah.
So we did do it.
I was the capital there in two thousand seventeen or later than that.
No, it, it would have been, I don't know exactly qualifies as capital, I think, you know.
Yeah.
But but that corral is is definitely there in two thousand seventeen.
Hey, other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, Kurt? Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, good to see Jeff back at all these meetings, I do want to give him a special thanks because in all of our. Lemp High Settlement agreements, I don't know that you missed more than one meeting in the two or three years.
Yeah, I think I missed one.
And uh, and so it it was good to to have your help and all of the rest of the board, we do appreciate it. Um, a couple of things that I would like to say is, and it's been addressed partially today, I do think that this year should count as one of the the two in five years. And the reason I say that is we had everybody on board to do that. Uh, all the water users, I, my water comes out of Big Timber Creek, but uh all the water users uh had agreed to do it. In addition, we had a few of the ranches that have conservation easements. And I thought that they really went above and beyond as well, because they said they would turn off all of their decree rights for that seventy-two hour of fish flush. And uh, and so in my mind, we were all geared up to do it. And and I'm not blaming Amy at all, because uh this thing happened and when uh somebody uh makes a. A call like that, you've got to approach it, you've got to deal with it. And so, but I do think that this year should count and the water users were all in uh. In agreement to do it, and I think if we don't, uh, it kind of sets a a bad taste in people's minds. A a bad taste about what uh what they are getting prepared for. As far as the four hundred and twenty CFS, uh, and I was involved in the discussions for the whole time for the four twenty CFS at McFarland Campground. The early discussions that we had, we were clear down in the two hundreds, two twenty, two twenty-five was the number. And that number just kept growing exponentially, we ended up, it's uh, the the lower threes, we hit three hundred and eighty-nine. And then the number was finally settled out at four hundred and twenty CFS. In my opinion, we're just flirting with disaster, if that number, we're gonna have. Without a doubt, there will be uh, there will be problems down through the the channel. Uh, and I really appreciated that Amy brought up that that in in it had been cut back this year to three fifty. I think that that was a a real welcome number, because at that point. Uh, the water is still contained in the channel, in the banks, pretty much. And and it doesn't take a lot to kick water out of the channel, if you have a tree that gets uprooted and lays in there sideways, there's gonna be problems that happen. But uh, at four twenty, I think we're just, we're just asking for a problem and for some litigation down the road. As Rick Sager uh was the water master for, I'm sure it was well over twenty years. Uh, when he was talking to us at one of our meetings and he said at that time. That uh, there's no way that water will stay within the banks at four hundred and twenty CFS, and so I think that uh. That we do need to revisit that number, uh, and and there's gotta be a number that works for everyone. But I think is Chairman Rabel said, we can work the the lower number and maybe not get everything we want, we get a lot of what we're we're looking at getting. Also, I was uh. I I was impressed with our meeting we had yesterday on cloud seeding, I think that uh. That's something that for me as a water user, I'm definitely in favor of of seeing what we can do in our valley. Uh, you don't have to. To look very far, if you have money in the bank and if you were getting a ten percent return on it, you feel like I'm really doing good right now. And if we can get a ten percent uh increase, maybe not ten, maybe five to ten percent, if we can do something like that. I, for one, am very uh in favor of going ahead and seeing what we can do with with cloud seeding in the Lemp High Basin. Uh, the recharge, I'm in favor of that, I think that. Our our tour and the discussions that we've had over the last two to three years. Have have shown that there is a willingness by the water users to get in and do what whatever we can do to help. Get more flow in the valley, and along that line, a lot of the people that would be doing the recharge will uh. Will not be seeing any benefit whatsoever, the water will be coming up down below and there will be a a benefit for the basin in general. But it will not be for the the people that are uh actually doing the this the recharge, it will be a benefit further down. And yet people are still willing to do that. I do hope that the board will also look at uh some dams, some storage, surface storage that we can do in our valley, there have been a lot of. Sites that uh for one reason or another have been. Uh discontinued or taken out of use, and I think that if we can look at some of these possibly stone reservoir on Little Timber Creek or or some other sites. I think that we would uh, we wouldn't be doing our full duty if we don't pursue some of these other spots to see if if there is an opportunity. For us to get out there and uh increase the the capacity to store some water, so it does not all leave the valley in a big flush in the spring. I think that's pretty much all I had, uh, other than to say, I do appreciate the opportunity that all of you have given us to. To have a a hand in in how our future goes out and and what happens for the next generation. I think if we don't address these issues right now, we're just going to, we'll kick the can down the road continually. And there will be problems for our kids to have to deal with, and we just as well see what we can do right now, so, thank you.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Borden? Thank you, thank you. Okay, all right, John?
Welcome. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
I see you lost the talk.
I did lose the talk, I took some, I took some advice, uh. Yeah, and uh, since the last time I've been in front of you all, I I do have a new job title now, I am the project manager for the water station program and I'm honored to be in front of you at this point today. Um, I'm just gonna update you all on our uh transacted tributaries that now have minimum stream flows on uh.
Is the chairman uh in your line of path between the?
I not believe, so I saw Amy pointing at the screen, she was able to, and so I uh. Um, I guess I can just just write a little bit here, um, so I will start with our uh minimum stream flow on Spokane Creek. Um, there are, there is a, a- as you saw in McFarland, there is an early season and a late season minimum stream flow. And the early season minimum stream flows for all of the tributaries, um, Spokane Creek, Canyon Creek, Big Timber Creek. There is a March fifteenth to a July uh nineteenth timeframe, there we go. Um, so that's the uh orange line that we see uh graph, that is our our early minimum stream flow. And that is based off of a P H C analysis that was conducted by USGS in the early two thousands. Um, on Big Timber Creek is eighteen CFS from uh March fifteen through uh the middle of or the end of July and um. So this is the hydrograph from uh this year so far on Big Timber Creek. And uh you see that we were, I'm in the yellow line, we have our our target flow, that is our our active water transactions on Big Timber one and and Big Timber two. That secures a seven point two CFS while the water users are calling for um their decree rights uh past those closed diversions and pumping out of the Lemp High. Um, this is a very cold spring, so we were, uh, we didn't see any any real water use um in Big Timber Creek for for quite some time until until about the middle of June. Um, on top of that, there was a severe ice near Ben on Big Timber Creek that created an obolion in the channel upstream of the gauge. And diverted all of the flow around the USGS gauge, Big Timber Creek, so we had uh zero reading for for much of the spring before the channel iced out. Um, however, once uh high water uh came through the basin, of course, we're meeting that eighteen CFS um in stream flow, and then after high water, we were um. There's a a new water master on on Big Timber Creek this year, uh, Kerry Grisell, who has been um adjusting water, um, working with the water users. Uh, that are engaged in our transactions and uh trying to maintain that 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 seven point two CFS. I'm managing the best of of their ability, and then our late season minimum stream flow is ten CFS. And based on some some late season water, uh, in form of rain, we've been meeting that occasionally, um, buts. So that that three CFS gap between the current target flow of the transactions and the minimum flow that um allows us to enter into additional support issue agreements. In in the future with the other building water users to help meet that that ten CFS minimum stream flow late season, uh, next slide please. Um, we've gone to Spokane Creek, um, this is in the lower Lemp High now, uh, Big Timber Creek is obviously uh uh in headwaters. Um, Spokane Creek has a minimum stream flow of thirteen CFS early season. And uh, we have a. Uh, combined target flow of, excuse me, um. A little confusing, so we have eight and a half CFS secured through uh water transactions in the yellow line and the uh orange line is our thirteen CFS or thirteen CFS minimum stream flow. Again, the cold and spring, um, the irrigators that are spilling past, uh, the closed Spokane Creek diversion didn't turn on until later in the in the spring, so we weren't meeting it early season. But um, once high water came, we're meeting it and then um. Uh, because of such a wet spring, there hasn't been um a call by the water users to to meet um not only our target flow, but the the minimum stream flow um. Late season, again, that gap between thirteen and eight and a half allows for additional opportunities for us coordinated water to the minimum stream flow um future years. And last but not least, we have Canyon Creek uh backup um in Headwaters area, uh, P H C again, um. Uh, contributed to this uh management flow of sixteen CFS, um, uh being agreed with the management flow. And our target flow is four CFS, um, given the current water transaction, um, that's. Um, Canyon Creek one diversion, and that is mirrored in the late season minimum stream flow as well, that starts, uh. Leave these states a little misleading, but um, the four CFS minimum stream flow is um from uh. Uh, mid-July, I, because, sorry, because the graph is uh, it's four CFS um for the target flow and minimum stream flow, so I think the the minimum stream flow again begins in late July at four CFS. And last year, uh, we met, that was a pretty, pretty abysmal water year, um, where we weren't meeting our our target flow most, uh, some of the irrigation season. Um, but as long as the the transaction continues on on Canyon Creek, um, we would expect to be meeting that minimum stream flow um. In the late season, um, sixteen CFS, I think is a little, honestly, it may be a little unrealistic for Canyon Creek. Uh, barring some some future cloud seeding that might give us a little bit extra flow in the early part of the season, um, but uh Canyon Creek is also a psychopersonal recharge. So we'd be anticipating shaving the top off of that hydrograph, um, with uh exercising uh some some recharge practices. So I don't anticipate meeting this early season minimum stream flow many times soon, but um, yeah, that's what I have for you today. I'll send for any questions.
Any questions for John? Right, Mr. Karen John, when we had those low flows now on this brick in July and August, but on the other two, was this passage stressed or?
Um, that is a question I I I can't can't answer right now, um, I'd have to to look at some of the 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 intact data that the Division Game has collected from the last couple of years, but I haven't. I've heard of of this passage being an issue, um, uh, other than if uh. And if we're for deep watering degree, and obviously, we are, we are burning to this best issues, but um, I I've seen uh, I can donate the evidence of a fish. Uh, do you know of fish rearing in these these reaches, even though we're not meeting our target flows or our minimum stream flows, so as long as there's connectivity, um, there is some benefit to fish.
So you have no periods of of completely watering in the summer?
Not this summer, no, the summer, summer was a was a boundless water here, um, but twenty-one and twenty-two, um, we did see some some brief periods of de-watering and uh. At at least that Big Timber Creek, but um, not not the other two creeks with uh, uh, minimum stream flows or active transactions.
Right, Mr. Chairman, oh.
Yes, Big Timber de-watered in twenty or twenty-one, it's uh. And our water master has been, uh, Adam, that we've got water going through there, and so if it's ever been de-watered, I would really question.
So uh, thank you, Kurt, um, so in in two thousand twenty-two, um, so the high water event twenty-two created a large scouring. Um, in in the channel and it's particularly below the Creek Road where, so we have Livingston Plume where the transaction is administered above Lee Creek Road. And we have set, we have seven two, we're seven point two CFS and we are there, um, we get below Lee Creek Road and especially last year, we had hundred fifty CFS going past the gauge. Um, at the high water event, after high water. At the high water event, after high water dropped out, it would take a lot of the fine blew out of that lower reach. And we had a, like a, a, a large losing reach in the creek that. So our seven point two CFS went down to about four and a half CFS. And then there's, I mean, I can go back, I don't have the data with me right now, but. There, there's times where there, there is a period of like one or two days where you see the. Flow in Big Timber Creek get very low and then talking with the water users that engage with our, engage in our transactions. Talking with the water master to readjust flows. Usually, it's no more than like a forty eight hour period, but. Of the last couple of years, I have seen a dip in the hydrograph that is below what we would like to see, given that we're paying a pretty high price for this.
But de-watered would be the question?
Yeah, I, I, I know for, you know, in twenty twenty two, early season, again, it's, it's. This period of time where, where our, our source switch transactions pumping out of the limelight, it might be too cold for those purposes to be running. And so there's not, maybe not a call for the water pass Big Timber one, Big Timber two. And we see the flow get, get very low. I know there was some steelhead red walks. Connected by fishing game that they showed up to the twenty colder and there was no flow and they. You know, weren't able to conduct their survey because there was, there was no water.
Well, I want to address that just more than. You know, to your point and then, Kurt's. So when you get late in the year, then you go into winter and Timber Creek against trees. There will be times when Timber Creek does dry up. So this year, when that event occurred. With water occurred during the period of the high flows and block that down. Timber Creek was dry, probably starting in December, probably stayed dry. Through the winter and till. Probably in April. And that would, that would then. Simply a natural occurring event.
And I, and I agree with you, Merrill. Yeah, that's exactly what I saw. Well, that icing event just, just took a creek. Come into the old L sixty three ditch and de-watered the lower, the lower half mile or so.
I think maybe what we're getting wrapped around the axle on here is the term de-water. And, and I, I think that we see flows get very low or extinguished because of natural events. And, and not because of versions without priority or without season. And that the transaction program is working to the best of its ability.
Correct. Yeah, and I would say that is a fair assessment as well that, yes, yes, we're, you know, we're doing our best to work. To work with the water users and using those transactions and the water master to make sure that there is, we're reading our obligations under the transactions.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Wendy. Welcome.
Thanks for having me today, Mr. Chairman and the board. Pleasure to be here. And Wendy Stilby with Idaho Department of Fishing Game Fish Screening Program. We're based here in Salmon. We're the only fish screening program in the state. Some of you may be familiar with fish screens and some of you it might be kind of new. So I just wanted to give a little bit of a screening one oh one and update the group on where we're at in terms of potentially fishing on Big Timber Creek. What did we decide? Oh, here we go. Fish screening one oh one. In a simple world. A fish screen is a fish passage device and you would divert your water off of the vein creek. Water would be diverted up here. It would come into this device. This, this is a rotating drum. Debris would go over the top, water would flow through. And there's a pipe here that would return your fish back to the creek. Simple, right? I mean, just. Fish slip and slides back to the creek. We're trying to create ramps that take fish back to the creek. If every diversion and every system was this size and this simple, we would not need nearly as big of a program as we have up here. But unfortunately, that's not the way the world really works. So the unanimous fish screen program here is a big program. We worked throughout the entire upper salmon basin. We have over two hundred eighty fish strains out on the landscape. There's a lot more diversions than that on the landscape, but that's what we do have screened. And we have twelve full time employees and seventeen seasonal employees in our program. It's a large program on the ground. And part of that is because there's a lot of components that go into the screening and a lot of components go into maintaining the. That much infrastructure on the landscape. Our program is, we are a mitigation program for Buffalo Power and NOAA. We are, we fall into the, to kind of habitat part of the, you know, big five. Or big four ages of, you know, how will we help. Save fish and, you know, for salmon or in, in the whole Columbia basin. So we're trying to protect all the stages of this young fish to get back out of the system. They swim all the way up here to spawn. We got to make sure they can get back out safely or that they can get to where they need to go. And it has been turned that, you know, one of the major limiting factors up here is fish passage and entrainment into your fish. Which is fish are very susceptible at certain life stages to be lost into your division, which is. In the upper salmon and in the limelight in particular, you know, really high percentage of the shrimp spawning occurs on private property. So the, this program and our relationship with, with water users has been very much focused on shrimp spawning habitat. And relationships with those folks. And the, as the program evolved and grew, the main stem diversions were the ones that we did first. So the main large, you know, screens on the, on the salmon and then in the limelight and Simoni and the upper salmon areas. Were focused on those main areas because that's where the majority of shrimp spawning occurred. We build what are typically these rotary drum screens. These are our main type of screen that we, that we build. And they're built to what's called NEMs or NOAA criteria. So the program here started in the fifties. And we started off, you know, with, nobody knew really how to screen for fish, you know, everybody across the whole Columbia basin was kind of. Trying and error, you know, doing a lot of trial and error on different things. Sometimes the screens didn't work very good for fish. Sometimes they didn't work very good for irrigators. They were probably better than having nothing, but it wasn't until the early nineties when fish were listed that science really came to play in helping develop. Fish screens that would meet the needs of the most life stages of fish, you know. So if you're a cattle rancher, you know, you don't just protect your cows out on the range. You got to protect your calves when they're in the lot. You know, you got, you got to look at all the life stages and that science really helped bring us up to the point where we are now. Where we can develop screens that protect from swim up par and like the little fry all the way through their, their whole life cycle. And that's, those are the most vulnerable stages are the fry and the outmigrating smolt as they're on their way to the ocean. After we got the main stem screen, we really started understanding the importance of the tributaries to fish. Life history, not just the vision of the salmon, but also to steelhead and cut through a whole trout up here. So the tributaries are critical lifelines. That's why up here for the last twenty years, we've been focusing on water and streams. All make, you know, getting fish past areas and then protecting those fish coming and going with the irrigation infrastructure and those tributaries. Tributaries bring a little more of a challenge to fish screening. And part of that is because they're a little higher gradient. There's, some of them are steeper, which brings in some issues with engineering. But we've been able to overcome a lot of those hurdles and we've learned a lot. And then also those tributaries are where we have a lot more fluctuation in our flows. And so we have not been screening in areas where the channel gets de-watered because you don't have any more to bypass your fish to. So screening has come as a watershed approach. So when we work with these water transactions and we help reconnect these streams. Then you're ready to also put in a fish screen when you are insured that there's water in the stream. So there's a place for the fish to go. The other thing that becomes a little trickier on the tributaries is we're often dealing with a little more federal land. So we start interfacing with the Forest Service and B L M more, which just brings in another layer of permitting and working together with other entities. Versus just working with a water user or private landowner on putting infrastructure on their property. So fish screens are kind of complex. I mean, it seems fairly simple, but when you're looking at protecting all the life stages, you have to have what's really called a bioengineering approach. And each site has its own unique characteristic. If this was something we could just go order up a fish screen, Carl says, I need a five CFS screen. Come plug it in. And Merrill says, hey, I got, I got one that I need ten CFS for some of the year, but I need twenty five CFS during high water. You know, we, we don't really have an easy formula to just say boom, 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 that's what we do. We have to do a lot of background to meet all the, the needs of the fish and the irrigator. So just a real quick on the juvenile fish screen criteria. Make sure that we're doing our job of saving as many fish as possible and then the irrigators getting their water. There's two main things that we're trying to accomplish for fish, and that is basically this premise of no contact and no delay. We don't want fish to actually hit these screens because especially when they're really small, they're very vulnerable. And they will get sucked onto those drums and they can go right over the top and down the ditch, and that's not what we're trying to do. And then we also want no delay. When, when outmigrating fish are trying to get to the ocean, they're on a really strict time table. They need to get there as quickly as possible. If they're just lurking around in the front of the screen and they don't know where to go. That's a problem because a lot of these fish will interface with, you know, dozens of diversions and screens on their way out of the limelight basin in particular. And if they were delayed in each one of those, they're not going to meet that timetable. They already have enough other hurdles down when they get into the hydro system dam. So every, every time that we can make that trip quicker for them, the better. So there's two things you need to do. You need to have a flow that is uniform across this face that doesn't allow fish to get sucked up onto it. And then you need this flow, this sweeping flow that directs them to that bypass pipe so that they know where to go. So those are the, the main tenants of how we get fish out of here safely and do the job we say we're gonna do. So when it comes down to the actual steps of installing a screen, there's quite a bit, and, and these guys have worked with us through the pain. Well, not painful process, but there's a lot of steps that go into actually coming up with an agreement with the water user. To be able to, you know, put infrastructure on their property and to be working with their water right and interfacing with that water right. So first, it starts off with a conversation, you know, we need to understand what their water right is and how they use it, what their decree right is. And then in the case with the high flow rates, it creates kind of a challenge for our program. Our screens are designed to operate. At one flow that will make sure that we can maintain all of that criteria. When you start to have a wide range of flows and irrigators allowed to use. It just creates a little more of a challenge on our side. There's some things we can do operationally within the screen to help mitigate for, you know, when you have a. Twenty CFS flows and then drops down to five at a certain point of the year, because we already have that with the regu, with regulation. But the screens don't operate as well at five as they would at twenty if that's what we designed it for. But we start off the conversation, then, like I said, each site is unique, so we have to go out and our engineer does a topographic survey. They get all that information because every site's different. We need to know where their headgate is. You know, where their diversion, what their diversion looks like, where the screen could be, where you can potentially have that bypass. Because the bypass has to meet a certain criteria as well. You can't be, if it gets too steep between the screen and where that fish return pipe is. It's like a cannon. You're shooting fish out of a cannon backing to the creek and, and that doesn't work for fish either. So. So we start there. If we're pretty sure that we're going to be moving down this path with somebody, we'll do what. We'll contract with a cultural resource person and we have to follow all the guidelines for cultural resource clearances. So we'll get a cultural resource survey done. And then we really need to ensure that we're going to have a commitment from the water users and the landowners. And if some of those landowners are either state or federal property, we need to start working on that end of it with those partners. On what it's going to take to, to put infrastructure on, on federal or state land. And then once we get to that point and we're feeling pretty confident that everybody's on board and that we have a good plan. Then we will start looking into putting those funds or that commitment into our contract. So we're, are, we have to identify on an annual basis what our infrastructure projects are going to be for the screen program. And we often try to work a couple of years ahead so that we have enough workload to keep everybody busy and to fulfill the needs of the water users. So we'll have to. Put that into our contract ahead of time. The cost of screening has gone up significantly as the cost of materials have gone up. We used to estimate that it was about five thousand dollars per cubic foot. Per CFS. That's not the case right now. You know, I mean, right now it's kind of unpredictable, but it's gone up quite a bit. These, we contract out the, the concrete work on a lot of these, the price of steel, all the materials have gone up. And so right now, our, our budget hasn't gone up as far as how much infrastructure we can put on the ground every year. But the costs have gone up. So the number of screens that we're replacing or building every year right now has kind of gone down temporarily. So once we put it into a contract, we'll really start working on the design. The engineer will get further down the road into the design. And then we'll review that with the water users. Then we have all the legal parts of it. We have for every diversion, we have a signed flow agreement with every water user off of that diversion. We need an easement for the actual physical structure and our ability to come and go and to maintain those structures. And, and then a construction agreement for the time in which we or our contractor will be in and out of the property. On top of that, we also have to, we follow, we file a water application for our bypass flow. Sometimes that occurs at this point. Sometimes it doesn't occur until a little bit later down the road, but we do apply for water for each one of those. Then we have additional permitting that we have to do, some of our other environmental compliance. Our shop will start fabricating the actual physical structure, the, the components of the structure. And then we'll do a public works contract to do the dirt work and install the concrete. And then our shop guys will actually come out and install a couple of works of those when that's done. We got a clean, then after it's installed, some of these folks have not used the screens in the past. There's a lot of. Education that goes with somebody that has operated headgate without having fish screen on it to now working with the screen program. And understanding, you know, not overtopping the fish screen, how to manage it properly. And then also when it comes to turning off a regulation or at the end of the season, we need people to ramp their flows down so we're not stranding fish. The fish can move from between headgating and the fish screen. So that's some of the parts of that. And then we have to deal with the maintenance of having this infrastructure underground. So right now, we have these twelve screen tenders that during irrigation season are checking these on nearly a daily basis. They come and go to these properties. They make sure that they're all working properly. If the screen's not working properly and the irrigator's not getting his water, we hear about it pretty much right away. If the screen's not working properly for fish, but the irrigator's still getting their water, unless we have screen tenders there, we really wouldn't care about it. So that's why we have that part of the program as well. So when it comes to specific, does anybody have any questions on that part, part of talking about Big Timber specifically? Okay, Big Timber specifically, we have, like I said, we've been focusing more on working in tributaries. And we've been really interested in working on Big Timber, but Big Timber's really just been coming online as far as its connectivity. In the last decade, you know, we've worked on fish passage issues, the water transaction. And so now that Big Timber is more connected. Screen programs, you know, positioning itself to start working in there. We have met with Carl Ellsworth and Kurt Bird and looked at their diversions. And this was probably, was that in twenty sixteen or seventeen? We actually did some topo surveys on them. And we were kind of phasing up to start putting that work into our contracts. We started working with the B L M because. Kurt's got diversions that are on B L M and there's some cultural resource issues there with the Carrie Act dam that we knew were going to be hurdles to get through. So we started working up there and then there was a lot of uncertainty about what the water rates would be. So, you know, for us, we can't build a screen until we know what people are going to be asking for, how much water they need. And so we kind of put the brakes on it while the settlement agreement has been worked on and worked through. But we're definitely now getting ready to gear back and work with these guys to help get the screen. Now that there's some sideboards as far as what's the maximum flow that they're going to be asking for in the right and, you know, what's their decree right. And I believe BLM also kind of has it in their work plan as well as far as trying to keep working on, um, the federal part of it. That's what I know for now is where we're at.
Okay, Laura.
Thank you. Do you release any ashtray spores into these tributaries like Big Timber?
Not in the tributaries. No, our, our smolts are now almost entirely, uh, released in the main stem and those smolts are, are all for sport fish mitigation for the most part.
Thank you.
Al. Someone says, maybe not all that pertinent to the Big Timber issue, but how do you go about prioritizing now that your budget is shrinking, not shrinking, but your ability to construction is shrinking? How do you prioritize where you put the streams? Basin, you go up, how do you agree with the Simroa ready to go to Limpi? Where do you want to put your screens? Because you, I thought I heard you say you got the most of the main stem done, right? So now we're up off of the, you know, the privileges to, to the main stem.
Yeah. That's a great question. So what we have done is, um, we've tried to look at these from a watershed approach. And so if we're looking at a tributary, you know, where, you, you kind of work from the bottom up. So most fish are going to interface with the diversions at the lower portion of a, of a system. And so if you can only do one or two, you know, you're going to be working at the bottom of those. But for the most part, we've worked on a watershed approach around here where you have to have fish passage, water, you know, and then followed by a screening. Screen won't fix your other problems, you know, screens are, are just one portion of the, of the problem. But if you don't have fish passage from other physical and barriers or, or dewatering, then we can't really screen. So that's how we have prioritized our work.
Well, I guess I was trying to get more to what parts of the, of the salmon are really, uh, areas that you're focused on? Are you looking above Valley, the Simroa, Limpi, where are you focused?
Oh, well, we, I mean, we have, the Simroa is largely screened, you know, already. East Fork is almost entirely screened. Um, and so within, and the upper salmon is almost entirely screened, except for, you know, certain tributaries coming in. We've done a lot of work in the last decade in there. So there's some places, um, you know, Big Timber is one that's, you know, a hot topic. We've got one on Canyon we still need to work with. There's a few Hughes Creek in the North Fork. Places that we interface with the most fish. I mean, that's where we prioritize. We know we've got, you know, multiple listed species in all of those, those tributaries that we would be helping.
So maybe the question is, how much more is there left to do? We've got
Yeah.
Are we at two hundred and eighty more or are we?
I don't think so. I think realistically, um, you know, as far as building out the program into places that are going to be really useful, I mean, I think we're probably more on the fifty or less scale, uh, when it comes, you know, there's some places we haven't even looked at because they're so disconnected and we're so far away from them being connected that it's not worth it. But that could change and, you know, I like it or two, you know, things, things change.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. And, uh, what's the life of these screens? How often do they need to be repaired, replaced?
Well, we, with our program, we've been able to extend the life of a lot of them with our maintenance. So having screen tenders go on a regular basis, you find problems before they become catastrophic. And so, uh, I would say we have been able to extend the life quite a bit. I, it depends on where you're at in the basin. Um, we've started replacing the concrete infrastructure on part of our fleet, you know, that are in that thirty, thirty year range because we don't want everything to fail at the same time. So in the last five years, we've been focusing a portion of that budget is on replacing infrastructure. Some of the parts in upper basin like around Stanley, concrete is, uh, and, you know, it's just really harsh conditions up there. And some of that concrete is maybe originally poured in less than ideal conditions. So it's failing quickly, um, just because there's such a short season when it's not freezing up there. So, um, that's part of it. And then our metalwork, we actually pull a lot of that metalwork out, bring it into the shop and re refurbish it, you know, more of a like ten year type rotation.
Yeah. Uh, so how do you go about this? What happens if you've got a screen in place and you find out it's not the right size? It restricts the amount of water that a irrigator might need for their system? What do you do then?
We haven't encountered that very often. There are situations in which can the, the drum size within that string, sometimes it can be manipulated to put a larger drum in that would allow more water. We don't change the size of the orifices, you know, than that. You just have to increase the surface area.
And if you sometimes, if you did that, you might have to change the concrete as well.
You may have to. I mean, that's why we do as much engineering and pre-work to as possible so that we avoid those circumstances.
Yes, one more. Could you just comment on your consultation process and all of this? Is everything running smoothly with Fish Wildlife and NOAA? Making sure we can get these screens in place or are they?
You know, it's been really streamlined with the programmatic. So BPA has their habitat improvement programmatic and NOAA has a programmatic for fish screening. It has really streamlined the process for us immensely, uh, when it comes to consultations. So as long as we're meeting their criteria within those programatics, we've really reduced the amount of time it takes for us to do things.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other question? Oh, okay.
Brian, did you know? Yeah, I, I thought I heard, sorry, Mr. Chairman, Lindy. You mentioned Kerriac project or Kerriac or are those Kerriac facilities on the, on the high then?
Um, well, yeah, these guys could tell you a little more history, uh, but basically on that Big Timber drainage, there was, there were some irrigation projects that were done, um, and we call it the, we've been calling it the Kerriac Dam, but didn't we learn that? Do you remember Kurt, when, when they did the original, um, we did some research into it because we knew that it was going to be a little bit of a hurdle to get over from a cultural standpoint. And we learned some more details about whether it was actually Kerriac or was it something else?
It was Kerriac. It was built, it started in nineteen oh nine and nineteen oh nine to nineteen eleven. I've got pictures, pictures of a lot of them. It was brand new. And it was going to irrigate thousands of babies over there.
Thousands.
That materialized.
Yeah, but the infrastructure's still there and these guys have still been kind of utilizing that to divert their water. But down the road, it might not be the best option. It's not functioning. It's, that's, it was.
So it was probably not fish passage on it originally, but there is now or?
Um, the way that it's operated, there's fish passage during a portion of the year and a portion of the year, it's probably not ideal. Would you agree with that?
The water is in that diversion approximately six weeks of the year. That's it.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot of water while it's there, but it only six to eight, maybe eight weeks on an exceptional water.
Pat, when, uh, in regards to your public works contract, are you dealing with the same contractor or do you have to let a new contract for each construction body?
We let one for each project or sometimes we'll batch screens if we think they're the same, you know, we have three screens that's enough for Limpi or something that we're working on, we'll batch them together.
Does it generally result in the same contractor or are you working with a variety?
Uh, we are working with a variety. Right now we have a pretty, um, we have a bottleneck with concrete. We only have one real guy that has a public works license that's been bidding on our projects, but he's been teaming up with different, um, you know, effort guys.
Okay. You want, oh, okay. Yeah, I thank you very much. I think you've satisfied our curiosity.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, all right. And, uh, I, I've had a queue that we need to take, uh, ten minutes, correct?
It's got a bit of delay. I know. Yeah, you'll have to log in soon. Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna come back to order. The rest of the board. You know, we're gonna hang for just a minute, find a couple more. Are they up, Paul? Or they leave? There's one.
I have this from Brian about.
Okay. All right, Dean.
Come here, Roger.
Okay.
Ryan and Dean get back, and we will continue with our report on implementation of the Left Eye Settlement. And David Graybill, the upper salmon basin water master, will be next.
Okay. Welcome, David. Glad to have you here with us today. I think we'll go ahead and let you get started. We'll catch Dean up when he gets here.
Okay.
There is, right there.
Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you today. My name is David Graybill. I'm a technical hydrologist and the water manager of the Upper Salmon River Basin Water District 170. Our district 170 is a result of the Wild and Seamic Rivers Agreement of 2004. The goal of the Wild and Seamic Agreement is to create an oversight water district that administers new and existing water rights, including in-stream water rights, and to prevent unauthorized diversions or unauthorized use of water. And that's usually accomplished through watermaster training and, when appropriate, written watermaster instructions. Water District 170 is a unique water district because it encompasses such a large area, includes 22 sub-districts, which include the Lemphe Basin. Through implementing the Wild and Seamic Agreement, we have learned that when you when you create or with these agreements, when you add additional complexities to water right administration, the water right administration workflow for water districts, that there's some inherent challenges associated with that increased complexity. One of the main challenges is recruitment and retention of watermasters in the basin. It seems that that's commonly tied to compensation of the watermaster. It can also be challenging to find qualified individuals to fulfill the role of the watermaster. And with that kind of turnover, it can be challenging to train the watermaster, especially, you know, if they only sticker it, if there's a revolving door every few years, that administration can be a challenge. But it's just one where, you know, focus will have to be put on those challenges. And my job would be to provide the training, you know, with each new watermaster. Additionally, with the Lemphe Settlement, there's an increased time period that the watermasters called on to work. Not only in the spring are they called on. Watermasters typically aren't called on until April, May, or June. The watermaster of the Lemphe Basin, and that's when the water district goes into its active administration period. And that's when the watermasters pay. The watermaster on the Lemphe Basin actually didn't get called on until July of this year, which is a little unusual. And then also, on the tail end of the season, when the water inspector, watermaster is no longer, their services are no longer required. But with the Lemphe Settlement, we're also going to have to extend the work window into the later season to deliver because those high flow or those stream channel maintenance water rights, they can come back into play after the regulation is over at the end of the season. And so the watermaster may be called to deliver those water, that water as well. And lastly, water districts are, they're local government, they're run by the water users. Their budget is is passed by the watering, approved by the watering insurers. The watermasters are hired by the water users. And so so there's some inherent challenges in that system. Luckily, we have you know, we have some time until July 1, 2024, to prepare for the administration and to deliver those stream channel maintenance water under the limits.
We must have wore our equipment during the break.
We make sure so, right?
Well, we'll get that first. There we go.
All right, we can skip to the next one. All right. So one of the tools that the watermaster needs to do to do their job is they have to be able to measure the water so they know how much to deliver. So there may be some minor challenges with sizing up measuring devices, devices overinstalled to measure the base flow water rate. And now they need to be sized up to measure a larger flow rate. There is a measurement order in place from 2003 to accomplish that. Lastly, there is a provision in the settlement that calls for a computerized accounting system, the creation of computerized accounting system. So we do have an online database. This is hosted on IDWR website. And as you, and this is what the, this is what it looks like. So you can see this hydrograph here. As the water measurement data is entered into the system at different point in time, the system will interpolate the measurements between them. So if you go from five, there's a five CFS measurement one day and a seven CFS measurement the next day, it'll draw a line between five to seven. It'll draw this hydrograph, and then here's the tabulated information. Here, you can export, export that into an Excel spreadsheet for analysis. So there's two ways the data can get entered into this online database. One is through the watermaster survey. The watermaster survey is a mobile solution that the department develops. So a watermaster with the handheld device can go and, and in real time, they can enter into virgin data, and a computer will scrape that information and will upload it manually into the online database. And so, so using the watermaster survey, it's almost instantaneous diversion information that can be used to implement the settlement. One of some of the challenges with watermaster surveys is that we found that watermasters are somewhat hesitant to adopt the technology. There's some, there's a bit of work on the front end to get it set up. You have to do inventory of the entire water district, all the diversions. You have to have all the measurement devices in place. All of the rating tables have to be uploaded to the watermaster survey for a tour. So if a watermaster preferred to do, you know, a lot of watermasters have their own system, usually on paper. And they usually, when we found that they usually prefer that. So they can also enter in the diversion data directly into the online database. And of course, there's always the challenge of, you know, getting someone to log in and to, you know, to do that in a timely manner where we can use that information to inform management decisions. And that's, that's all I have for you guys today. Any questions?
Okay, questions?
Dean, a question. What kind of schedule do you have? You know, you have to, you talked about you have the ready schedules. You have a schedule to go around and try to ground truth and have to redo those schedules occasionally, or?
What can you, what can you read my schedule? I don't know.
Well, you said you had reading schedules. You have to go and re-rate these diversions, huh? You have to the.
Well, the range, no, they're approved devices. So the, so yeah, so for like a bloom or, you know, we're the rating table, the rate never changes. It's empirically calculated, so.
Do you not have to go around and redo any of those or check any of those?
No, we don't. If it's a department-approved measuring device, we, we do not audit them. Yeah, we would audit non-approved measuring devices like, like when we were in Niagara Springs. And we have the drop board situation when we were. Yeah, we, we would audit non-approved measuring devices like, like when we were in Niagara Springs and we had the drop board situation when we were changing down in Eastern. That, that was where we would audit that kind of measurement.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, we will have an update on the cloud seating feasibility study that Jason from Sarah Kessendorf, and I think Kayla would like to reintroduce her after last meeting.
Yes. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, stakeholders, the members of the public. Thank you all for being here today. My name is Kayla Holden. I'm also a project manager with the department. And in my role, I represent the board as staff overseeing their cloud seating program. So I do work a lot with our stakeholders and our program partners, as well as the general public, helping to educate and move this program along. So this feasibility and design study, as most of you are aware, is a contribution on behalf of the board to try and see what our opportunities are for cloud seating in this basin. And I will start by saying I'm happy to report there are opportunities and we are still working to define how odd those are. So really quickly, an overview of this study, the board did contribute about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to do this feasibility and design study. This study is slightly different from the feasibility and design that we did in the bear. We have done a shared infrastructure assessment in that in the Lempi Basin. We are also doing a cost benefit analysis in addition to the feasibility and design study. So I am going to turn things over to Dr. Sarah Kessendorf with N-Carver. But very briefly, I did want to give you all an introduction to Dr. Kessendorf. She is a project scientist in the research applications lab of the National Center for Atmospheric Research. She currently, excuse me, including topics on improving auto micro physics parameterizations and specifically winter time orographic cloud seeding. So Dr. Kessendorf has published over forty-five peer-reviewed journal articles. And she was also the principal investigator, leading the snowy research project, which you are all familiar with. You've seen the radar images, basically the zigzag backlines, kind of demonstrating that cloud seeding has worked. So Dr. Kessendorf was a principal investigator on that, and she also serves on the World Meteorological Organization expert team on weather modifications. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Kessendorf for an update on the Lempi Basin feasibility.
Welcome to our meeting. Thank you very much for taking time to be here in person and present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Ward. I'm happy to be here and looking forward to give you a brief update on our Lempi Basin feasibility study that we've begun. And then I look forward to seeing you again tomorrow on the updates on the Bear River Basin study to be completed. So I just want to first walk you through a high level view of cloud seating. This helps guide the type of analysis that we're doing that I'm going to be presenting on today. So this is a high level conceptual design of the steps.
What'd you do, Dale?
Okay, I think it's fixed. I don't hear. So this here is a conceptual design of the winter orographic cloud seeding model. And so the steps that are outlined here start with the basic first step of meeting a cloud of supercooled liquid water. Then you can release silver iodide generally by ground-based generators or an aircraft. That, those particles need to disperse and get into the cloud, then ice can form. And once the ice forms, they readily can grow into snow at the expense of that supercooled liquid water. So for the purpose of the study that we're doing for feasibility, there's two key things that we're looking for to find out if there's opportunities for cloud seeding with silver iodide. First, we need to understand if there are clouds of supercooled liquid water over the region. How often do those occur, for example? And they need to be at an appropriate temperature for silver iodide to nucleate, which has been shown in lab studies to be colder than minus six Celsius or twenty-one degrees Fahrenheit. So that's the key criteria that we're going to be looking for. There are a few additional components that we also look at then as well, which is especially important for the opportunities for ground-based seeding. Because those are fixed assets. Once you put them on the ground, it's not going to move. And so you need to make sure that the wind direction is appropriate to get the silver iodide plume into the targeted region or targeted clouds. And we want to make sure that the atmospheric stability allows for that, those particles to get up and into the clouds and not get trapped in a valley or gets blocked and go around and out. So those are some additional criteria that we also look for for ground-based seeding. So this is just a high level overview of the steps that we're taking in this feasibility and design study. The first is this climatology analysis. That's what I'm going to be reporting on some of those high level results today. Where we're understanding how often are these opportunities for seeding in the region? What are the characteristics of the cloud in the region? Once we get that understanding, then we can move into the preliminary design. Using those results, we want to understand what methods of cloud seeding are most going to be used most effectively to target those clouds. And then this last step of the design study is to test and refine that preliminary design. So we use our high resolution cloud seeding model to do this, to understand how effective are each of these different design options at targeting and enhancing precipitation in the region, as well as what combination is really the optimal and recommended design. So for the first component, climatology analysis, we, we look at historical data. We want to look at the temperatures, supercooled liquid water contents, precipitation winds and atmospheric stability. So that's what I'm going to be focusing on today. One other thing I'll point out is that we don't have the observations typically that we need to do this type of a study just with observations. Those that are familiar with the region, there's only a couple snow tell, snow gauge sites in these mountains. And that's most of the observations that we have. We don't have weather balloons. We don't have measurements of the supercooled liquid water and clouds. So what we have been using recently are these high resolution, long-term model simulations that have been shown to compare very well with the precipitation measurements that we do have available. And so this really has allowed us to do feasibility and design studies in a much more sophisticated and robust way than those of the past as well, when you really only had a couple snow gauges to use. And so you're like, well, it's precipitating now. Maybe we can see, we have a lot more insight we can gain with these model simulations. So this is the region that we're focused on, the Lempi Basin in particular. We also are looking at generally in the Passimero Basin because of the fact that the Lempi Mountains share, you know, the divide for those basins is the Lempi Mountains, and we want to assess if there are any opportunities upwind that could then have precipitation enhancement impacts in the Lempi Basin as well. On the map on the right, we have a whole bunch of points on here. Some of these are the snow tell sites. Some of them are points that we've been extracting for looking at the winds and other measurements, not measurements necessarily, but variables from the model simulations. And then we've got a lot of these areas here where we can look at the gridded data from the model to assess upwind and downwind slopes of the Lempi Mountains, for example, Beaverhead. So we've broken up the region into different sub-regions for this analysis. So this is just a glimpse at maps of the frequency of time in the winter time period, November through April over this region that meet the two basic criteria, having a supercooled liquid water, temperatures colder than minus six in the layer between zero and one kilometer AGL or above ground level. This is what we call the ground seeding layer. This is the atmosphere, the atmosphere that if you seed with ground-based particles, you'll probably be able to influence. And these are broken out by month. So this is up here in the upper left, November, December, January, February, March, April. And you can like, so these are, I can see the contours of topography are pretty faint, but the color contours are showing frequency of opportunity. So one of the key things that you can see is the opportunities are most frequent on the mountain ranges themselves. The Lempi Mountains in the, in the center here have decent frequencies on the order of twenty to twenty-five percent at times. The, the highest frequencies we actually are seeing in the core winter months, December through February, when it's coldest near the surface, as well as we tend to see the highest frequencies up in the Beaverheads in the lower part of the basin. But the Lempi Mountains themselves do tend to have pretty decent opportunity in the core winter months. It's more on the upwind side, so technically over the Passimero. But again, that's the upwind slope where those clouds are forming. And so we're going to be looking to see if there's ways to target those clouds with impacts into the Lempi. When we look at the airborne layers, so this gets those up higher. Aircraft can't fly too close to the surface and clouds because the mountains themselves are a hazard. So we look at an altitude where they can safely fly in clouds. And when we go up in altitude, we tend to see a reduction in supercooled liquid water. A lot of that tends to hug the terrain. So one, that's one reason that we'll see these reductions in overall frequency. But one of the things that I'll show later is that with aircraft seeding, you don't have to worry so much about the stability and that those dispersion factors because you can see either above the cloud or just in the cloud. So in that respect, you actually get similar frequencies between ground-based and airborne. But again, one of the things I'll point out, if you can make it out, this, you can see it's quite faint, but the airborne opportunities tend to extend well upwind of the mountains. And that's something that we've seen in other regions too, where you get these clouds that are supercooled hanging out. And if you can get an aircraft in there, you can have pretty widespread impact over those regions. So I'm looking forward to seeing how some of our aircraft simulations in the future months look for, for this region. When we look at this, this is, these are bar charts monthly, looking at some of those sub-regions. Pay attention just to the cyan colored bar charts. These are also again, November to April. This is now for airborne seeding. The, the, the frequencies of time that you can target, these areas are pretty similar as you go through the months because the temperature doesn't change as much up at that altitude like it does near the surface. So you have opportunities as much as, especially here in this upwind of the Lempi Mountains region, you have opportunities between fifteen to twenty percent of each of these months. Now, in the two bar charts here, we see reduced opportunities. This is on that downslope side of the Lempi Mountains where we're not getting as much of the supercooled cloud on that actual side of the divide. When we look at the Beaverheads, this upwind side of the Beaverheads, we start to see the fifteen to twenty percent in any given month as well. For ground-based seeding, I mentioned that we also need to look at other factors, wind being one of them. So what we're looking at now are wind roses at some of these different sites that we've been focusing in on. Wind roses are just basically showing you which direction the wind is predominantly coming from. So in this one here at Chalice Airport, and these are, these are being constrained by when there's precipitation. So we want to know under conditions that are producing precipitation generally, what are your wind flows? So over Chalice Airport, most of the time we get westerly winds at this site when we have precipitation over this region. You can generally see we're in the mid-latitudes, westerly is the dominant pattern, but you will see some differences. For example, here in the center of the Lempi Basin, we have a much wider range of wind directions. It's not as focused as it is over the Chalice area. So you could have some southwesterly and even northwesterly, and even a little bit more of a northerly component at times than what we see at, say, the, the lower basin area or even here in the Passimero. This is important because it helps us understand where might we want to put ground-based generators in that preliminary design. So on that note, we review the climatology results. We place hypothetical ground-based generators out there based upon those results. And we also identify possible aircraft tracks that we want to test and refine in that final step. So this is the point that we're at with this study right now, is we've put out a whole bunch of potential hypothetical ground-based generators. This is the benefit of doing a study like this with a model like our model that can simulate the effects of cloud seeding is we can, you know, the world is our oyster. We can try a lot of things. So as you can see here, we've heavily put a lot of groups heavily focused on the Lempi Mountains. We've got some groups up in the northern parts of it, as well as on the upwind side, as well as right up on the press. We've got a few generators here in the basin. This is something that we wanted to test because manual generators are often more cost-effective when you can put them on somebody's ranch. The question will be if they can actually get up and into the clouds. And so we're going to test a few of these sites here. We also have put some along the foothills of the Beaverhead, and we've even put some up here off to the north and northwest to see if we can get them up at altitude and help them disperse over the basin. So that's the key is we want to get the plume of silver iodide impacting the clouds and precipitation that falls in the Lempi. On that note, I mentioned earlier that the airborne, you don't, you only have those two criteria because we can fly the aircraft in any track we really want, and we fly it up in the clouds or just above the clouds. With ground-based, we look at some of these other criteria like wind directions and a metric we call the fruit number. It basically indicates that stability of the atmosphere and how likely the air is going to go around the barrier versus over it. And so when we take those extra factors into, into into play here, we can look at the, the difference between the blue bar, that blue tall bar is the one that's just how often is there supercooled liquid at the right temperature? And then when we add in the fruit number, it's this red bar. So when you see a big reduction, that means that a lot of those times where we have the supercooled liquid with the right temperatures, it's actually under a pretty stable or weak wind situation where the flow probably won't get over the barrier. This is especially the case in the Passimero area, less so for the Beaverhead. So this was something, I mean, we do see some reduction, but it's not as dramatic as what we see in the Passimero. This is one of the reasons why we want to test some of those ground-based generators in the middle of the basin. We don't always do that, just a preview to tomorrow. For the bear, we didn't see opportunities a lot of the time to do that, but because it's a more cost-effective way to do it, we're going to be simulating that too. So wrap up. So our next steps are the simulation to test all of these different generator groups. We will also then put out some potential aircraft tracks to simulate those and come up with that optimal recommended design. The last thing that I wanted, and these are the ones that we're testing, the last thing I wanted to mention, as Kayla pointed out, we're going to be doing a cost benefit analysis as part of this feasibility and design study now too. And this is something that, you know, it's pretty basic. We want to be in the blue section of this diagram where that cost of water from seeding is not more than the natural cost of water. But so the key components here that we're going to be looking at are the cost of a seeding operation balanced with the amount of actual water that you can produce from seeding. And so that's part of that optimization that I've been talking about, why, why you might want to look at manuals or you might not want to be able you might not be able to put out twenty generators. So if you can only put out ten, how much is the trade-off for what you get and benefit, that kind of thing? Something that I just will add up here, it's kind of intuitive, but you know, one of the other things that I like to remind those that are interested in cloud seeding is that if you have a situation where you're, you've got a low cost of seeding operation or you can produce a lot of water, you keep this cost low and then it's always a pretty cost-effective. But a lot of the time I see that we're in this type of middle ground where, you know, the cost of water, these opportunities to see will vary. How much we can actually produce might not be as much as we all hope. But it doesn't mean that it's not going to be cost-effective. It really is going to then depend on what that cost of water is. So it can, you know, in one place, the same amount of seeding effect might be cost-effective than, you know, another place where it's not. So that's something also in mind. But this will be an analysis where we just, we try to, like I said, optimize this. We'll, we'll get some general estimates on what the cost for these different operations would be. And then use our best estimates to understand like what the range of possible amounts of water produced would be based on that climatology, how often there are seeding opportunities and our model simulations of the magnitude of impact that we tend to get. So that's one of the last steps that we'll be conducting as a unique component of this study that was not part of the bear. So just to wrap up, this study is being conducted. We've studied the potential cloud seeding in the Lempi Basin. Right now, we're seeing between ten to twenty percent of the winter season have these opportunities for seeding, but it does vary by location, more on some of the upwind slopes than the downwind slopes. These studies that, these results can be used by program managers and water users interested in implementing a program. And the last point I want to make is that, you know, as we've seen in the bear, and we did the shared infrastructure down there for the bear versus the upper snake, there may also be opportunities here to partner with the state of Montana for a shared infrastructure study in the future. The state of Montana has just contracted with us to do a feasibility and design study just across the Beaverhead Divide. So like, they're also interested in this. So this is some ongoing work that I know Kayla is going to be paying attention to in order to generate some cost savings, leveraging partnership, that kind of thing. I'll take any questions.
Do their clouds flow west?
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Kohansson, yes, yes, the, the general thing that we see in the mid-latitudes is that westerly wind is pretty dominant. Being on the other side of the divide though, they might have, and because they might have more influences from the north, from the Arctic. So that's some of the things that we'll have to look at there. But we haven't started that study yet. Hopefully next month we'll get that one started. But it'll be actually really nice to have these two studies kind of going hand in hand and, and being, being in discussion with them and with Kayla on the opportunities for potential partnership.
They're pushing out right. Uh, so. One of the things that you mentioned as you're looking at locations high in the mountains to do ground based generators. And we started with the found that we can find private property as opposed to federal property and trying to get those things. Decided is going to be a lot easier. I'm curious, is, is your study going to be able to take that into account yet, or is that? Would that fall on your step?
Great question. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Barker, we um are not going to be considering that component right now. All of these hypothetical designs um are just based on, you know, us trying to find some potential. Um, some of the next steps, when you get into that implementation would be doing the site surveys. And part of that is taking into consideration land use, land ownership. And, and I completely agree from what I've seen and heard from programs. Um, federal land, you have a lot of extra steps and so private land um or state land or whatever can also be. Um, help the program move along more quickly. The, I, I mean, federal land is not, it can happen. You can get site permits on for federal land, but there's more steps and that can take time.
And there are a bunch of. Captain mining lakes out there in the mountains here on the earth, that might be a source. Opportunity.
Okay, Brian.
Mr. Chairman Sarah, so if we were going to approach and toss, let's say, Montana on the Beaver Head flight track. Do you have a percentage of the snow that falls on the up slope and how much falls on the, on the down slope? Plain Idaho, Montana, for instance.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Anderson, that's actually what a second step study would need to cover, a shared infrastructure type study. Um, and I'll show some of those results of what, how we did that for the Bear River Basin with uh the Upper Snake. To try to understand how that um proportional, um, how it could be arranged for a partnership. Is it a fifty fifty or, you know, how does that work out? Um, but sharing an aircraft is likely going to be one of the better opportunities there because that is a, it's a pretty big cost. And I do think that they tend to have better ability to feed over a lighter area where whichever side of the divide you're on, you can probably get some benefits from that. So that's certainly a step to look into.
And, and just a little bit of follow up. Um, so with the, with the airplane, um, if you're dropping the. You're dropping the players into the clouds, is that dispersed as well as when you're flying, actually flying through the clouds or? Or is that something?
That's a great question. We, we have results from our snowy field project where we've been able to observe the effects that are different between those that when you're flying in cloud. Um, burning the flares on the back of the wing continuously versus dropping the ejectables. And from an aerial spatial effect, I do believe that the burden placed, what we call them, are more effective. Um, we have not looked at if you can fly above the cloud and, and, and the effects of broadcast seeding. Where um you could maybe fly those genera, or fly those flares burning continuously and let it blow down wind and impact the cloud. Um, but I think there's some potential there. One of the reasons that aircraft have to fly and do ejectables. Is because they can't fly in the cloud either because the icing is, the supercooled liquid water is so much that the icing hazard is too great for them. Or it's too low altitude. And so if they could fly upwind of that cloud at the altitude that they need to in broadcast seed, that might be another approach. But it'll depend on what the terrain is like upwind. If it's just as steep, you know, just as high, then they might not be able to fly any lower. Um, but those are some other options, but I do think that the uh spread and aerial impact is so far looks to be greater from that continuous release.
And Kayla, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, in regards to the cost share, I just had a comment, um, you know, in regards to how we currently do that with our program partners. And that's not necessarily based on the benefit of where that lands. So our aircrafts have, as you're aware, fixed and variable costs, or fixed costs to keep that pilot and that aircraft on standby. Those are going to be the same every year. And so currently between our basins where we do share costs for this infrastructure. We share fifty fifty on the fixed costs because we know those will be the same. And then we end up attributing the variable cost based on the use of the aircraft. So if that aircraft sees most of its station time or its seeding time and, you know, thirty percent in one basin, then thirty percent of those variable costs are going to get assigned to that basin. And if, you know, sixty percent, um, we can, we see the seeding opportunities to that aircraft station time is spent by seasonality. In that other basin, then the variable costs get attributed. And so currently we have a five year average established for that. If you think forward, I would see that as being a reasonable approach for our program.
Thank you. Yeah, Sarah, uh, we have other reporting preparation in the state of Idaho Power. Now, is Idaho power involved with the MI at all?
Mr. Chairman and Mr. President, no, they are not. They don't currently have interest in this area. I think Ms. Kohlman can probably speak a little bit more to that perhaps.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fans, Joan, um, so, you know, as our program partners, they have had to help us along in educating us through this process. Um, but at this time, we have not approached them uh or had any discussions about their involvement in moving beyond our existing basins.
Yeah, the water that will be created goes into the salmon mainly, then the salmon goes out. And so they have no benefit for a power generation. Thank you. Okay, any other question? Okay, thank you, Sarah. We'll see you again. Okay, all right.
Okay, next, we're going to have John Alfredo back out to talk about the L six diversion. He has not put his tie back.
Uh, hello again, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ford, and I will apologize. I'll be up here for quite a few agenda items, um, but we'll start with L six. Um, as, as Senator pulls up this presentation, um, this presentation is going to cover the history of the current L six structure. How the structure has functioned over the last thirty years, um, how it was originally designed and some emerging issues that I believe this group should be aware of and can move forward. Um, just to orient ourselves as we, uh, before we move forward, uh, there's the L six diversion here, um, on the lower, uh, eight miles of the Lenhi River. The hash marks shapes are all irrigation POUs for L six. Uh, we have the L seven, L eight, L eight eight and the L nine diversion is just upstream here. And all the open green shapes are all the irrigation POUs that currently supporting the two divorce in an stream flow at L six. And this cross here is the um USGS green gauge for the watershed board water master who uses to administer um here in a clean flow. So back in the uh eighties and early nineties, the US Bureau, US Bureau of Reclamation was working with a series of states. Uh, federal agencies and tribal agencies to help save off um an A U C S Act listing of multiple salmon populations throughout the, throughout Northwest. And the Lenhi was one of a few uh model bars that's chosen to uh host their, their water conservation demonstration projects, as it's called at the time. And um. So the, the target reach uh was about eight miles. They included um the L six and L seven diversion. And it was thought that uh through some improvements in diversion structures, we could not only um meet decree water right administration. But also facilitate upstream and downstream movement of um for uh potentially threatened salmon. And as I've mentioned to this before, the Lenhi um helped us support forty five percent of the entire Columbia River uh spring summer run. Uh, shrimp and salmon production of that, that forty five percent number includes the Snake River uh population segment of spring summer rationing. So uh during this time, from the eighties to the nineties, uh, diversions from L one to L seven were either consolidated, eliminated, or redesigned to deliver irrigation water and water rates. That would facilitate fish passage. And it was during this time that the current irrigation fish structure that was installed at L six and L seven. And it's known as the Obermeyer spillway gate system. Uh, this design was chosen by the US Bureau of Reclamation because of Lenhi's ba, Lenhi Basin's water management paradigm of the early nineties. To facilitate salmon recovery centered around a periodic voluntary fish flushes. And the current structure consists, consists of four automatic head gates. Um, and we see from a downstream view here and nearly a dozen pneumatic in-stream steel gates. Uh, that can either check the water across L six water users or be laid completely flat to facilitate those fish flushes. And then here is the current fish ladder for um upstream adult fish passage. So this graph is the twenty twenty two hydrograph uh for, for moving past L six. Um, which peaked at fourteen hundred CFS in, in mid-June. And, and this, the blue hash marks are daily detections of adult shrimp moving upstream past L six, which peaked at ten to twelve fish per day. On one, on the descending limb of the hydrograph, it blows between two hundred and four hundred CFS. And last year's high water event uh was considered a five year flow event. Meaning there's a one in five chance every year that you would see, expect to see flows of this magnitude going past L six. And adult fish movement corresponded with the fish, the fish ladder design specs. Um, that was implemented um when the design, when the um structure was uh constructed into in nineteen ninety six. So as mentioned, the original project plan for L six was in the lower Lenhi Fish Passage in general was implement voluntary fish flushes that would send sixty CFS. Past L six for twelve hour periods, up to three times a year to facilitate that fish passage. However, since the current L six structure was completed in the mid nineties. The water management paradigm, as you're well aware of, has shifted from periodic fish flushes to voluntary supportive tier water rates. To meet that thirty five twenty five CFS minimum stream flow for the duration of irrigation season uh, March through, through uh November. And in fact, the design for the fish ladder, um, which I pulled from some, some archival documents, um. I was able to uncover at the watershed office and the Lenhi water management district office. Um, the flow for the fish ladder was assumed that river flow is below thirty CFS, there'd be little to no fish movement um in the lower Lenhi. Um, but, and the significant shift in water management um from flushing flow to a minimum stream flow has had a direct benefit uh to migrating salmon in the lower Lenhi. Because in a bad water area like twenty twenty one, adult fish that would otherwise be stranded below L six are able to move upstream to the primary spawning grounds. In Hating Creek and the upper Lenhi with only twenty seven, twenty five CFS in uh going past L six after July one. And you can see in the twenty twenty nine, twenty twenty one hydrograph here, uh, we had a dismal, a br, dismal spring flow that um peaked at three hundred CFS. And the bottom dropped out um before July one, when we still needed to have that thirty five CFS in, in L six. And um. Despite uh pollution dropping out, you know, the thirty five CFS before July one, we still had about three fish per day moving across L six then. And then even when we were in the twenty five CFS going through uh mid-August, one to two fish per day were, were, were able to move across. L six making use of that migration corridor provided by the minimum stream flow. And drilling down the numbers a little bit more, ha, over half the adult returners in twenty twenty one made use of migration corridor with less than uh thirty five CFS. Um, or less, sorry, thirty five or less CFS uh going past L six. And this, this group is aware, but for those of you online or in the room who aren't aware, that, that uh management paradigm shift happened. From a periodic fish flow to a minimum stream flow because of the uh legal water withdrawal in May two thousand. That led to uh de-watering of the Lenhi River below L six or functional de-watering um. That uh, you know, didn't allow fish passage. That led to juvenile take of ESA, of threatened um ESA listed shrimp and the threat of no enforcement uh coming into the basin. After which it was negotiated that a more reliable wind flow was required in the lower Lenhi to prevent that de-watering and take a pretty bad path for ESA with some on it. So then in two thousand and one, on uh the Idaho Water Resource Board on behalf of local irrigators. Asked the state legislature and uh the Idaho Department of Resources to uh appropriate a new minimum stream for right at the L six diversion. And that minimum stream flow right gave the board the legal authority to enter into contracts with senior water right holder. To subordinate all or portion of their water rights uh to that minimum stream flow was not being met during the irrigation season. And today we have uh fifteen uh participating senior water right holders that voluntarily agree to subordinate that uh their water rights up to one hundred days per irrigation season. And to further illustrate the importance of this uh migration border, not just for adult fish, but juvenile fish. This is again, looking at the twenty twenty two hydrograph for the time early season, um, looking at the juvenile migrants. And uh the, the black bars here are twenty twenty two juvenile migrants. And the orange and blue bars are twenty twenty one and uh twenty twenty juvenile migrants. And as bad as twenty twenty one was from a, from a flow perspective, twenty twenty two was, was just as bad, at least in the early season. Where the board began purchasing water um on April fourth um in, in twenty twenty two. And the juvenile out migrants were, were clearly responding to the low water situation that we had in the basin. Moving out of the basin weeks earlier than the largest pulses from the two previous years. So this kind of moves brings us to where, where, where we are uh currently and, and where, where we need to go. Um, as a direct result of the current infrastructure at L six and L seven being forced to function in a way that simply wasn't designed for. The structure is falling into a state of disrepair. Um, the steel Obermeyer gates that are controlled by inflatable flatters subgrade are completely inoperable at this point. And you can see it's a little blurry in here, but these gates are literally being cropped up by steel braces. And they require in-stream excavator work to, to um before and after high water to physically adjust these um, these gates to, to maintain that minimum stream flow. Uh, furthermore, the head gates have uh, have, have automatic motors, but because they're being adjusted on such a frequent basis for that minimum stream flow. Those motors are burning out on a regular basis. Um, they're heavily affected by, by sediment getting in the motor slots. And a former water master had to, had to hardwire a series of twenty in relays in the, the um electric panel for the head gates. Um, to, they're constantly burning out and, you know, hardwiring uh relays that should uh, you know, be able to trip. Um, this is an inherent fire risk. Um, furthermore, back in the nineties, um, when the US Bureau of Reclamation transferred uh, or right, right as the, the US Reclamation was transferring ownership. From uh, from themselves back to the L six water users after construction. The L six water users requested that uh some sort of upstream boom be placed. In uh the area of the head gates to prevent racking of debris. And this is from twenty twenty two high water event that racked a, a large amount of debris. Um, the idea was a log boom would, would move debris over the checkup dam to, to prevent any unnecessary damage to the head gates. And as you can see, um, uh, that log boom has never been constructed. So moving forward, um, initial talks with the L six and L seven bar users, US Bureau of Reclamation, Idaho Fishing Game, Governor's Office of Species Conservation. Water Resource Board staff and the Lenhi Soil and Water Conservation District has given the green light to conduct uh or pursue an alternatives analysis. For replacement of this aging infrastructure. And multiple concepts can be discussed as we move forward, but the new structure uh must check all of these boxes to get this group's approval. And that's to keep irrigators whole or better off than they were before. Make water administration at the head is easier and with less moving parts. And design an in-stream diversion structure that facilitates better sediment transport in fish, in fish passage at all flows. Now, up until last week, there was a plan to go forth and ask for about a hundred thousand dollars. In a fiscal year twenty forecast um through the BPA court um with the, the sub, the constitution district, um, holding that, that, uh, this contract. Um, with oversight from the government office of species conservation to pursue an alternative analysis. Um, but recent staff changes in the district, um, there's no current capacity to pursue this. Um, this, this upcoming fiscal year that starts on October one for the federal government. Um, but hopefully, um, uh, that, that staff can, can be backfilled and, and you can go forth and into fiscal year twenty five ask for this alternative analysis. And the idea is that we would have um at least two subcontracts under that. Uh, one being with a, a qualified design firm and another with a local water user as a mediator. To hold a series of ten or, or more public, public meetings to vet alternative options that can include um replacement, consolidation. And sourceless options or, you know, combination of those three. Uh, the end of the alternatives analysis, we hope for about a, a ten percent uh design on one to three options. That can then be taken um to the upper standard basin watch program's advisory committee. Um, or an official, or a new MOU uh process uh that identifies responsibilities and, and timelines for different stakeholders on. That are involved in this project. And uh to find, to hone in on, on one final design to then go back to BPA uh for uh full design on that. And then hopefully, um, another ask for, for construction that hopefully breaks ground from time in the twenty twenty seven timeframe. Um, I'm not asking for a, for a funding comment right now from, from this group, just an update on, on, on where we're at on, on some emerging issues at L six. And um a, a potential path forward. Um, funding options uh vary from federal to state uh funding for funding sources for the, for the design and the construction portion of this project. Um, but the, I'll stand for any questions right now on, on L six, if, if there are any.
Questions.
Right. Mr. Chairman, John, that, that what was the cause of the failure on the Obermeyer? Was it bladders or the pipe cement concrete or?
Mister, Mister Chairman, uh, board member, both said, uh, my understanding that the pneumatic, pneumatic bags are, are fed by a series of, of airlines that are constantly getting leaks in them. And um, from, from my understanding, you know, talking with, with previous water master, Sager, um, these, these bags have been kind of limping along. Um, since they were installed and I, 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 I get the feeling that they, you know, maybe not have been fully operational even since, you know, the original construction. Um, but as I mentioned, it's, it's not just the, the steel, the steel overmire that are failing, it's the head gates as well. And um, some of these maintenance costs necessarily haven't been passed down the ditch reminders as well. Um, so I think the part of the issue, um. Uh, recognizing this, this uh, this merging issue is just coming to port right now with Rick stepping aside, Lacy coming up, um. Coming up behind him and um, sound like Rick was absorbing some of these costs on his own. And uh, now that this uh, issues are getting passed on the ditch, this might become more of an issue um, that water get, water users will, will see in their annual assessments.
And how old was the structure?
So it was completed in nineteen ninety-six, so it's, you know, not even thirty years old at this point.
Other questions? John, uh, this year was a good water year for the basin. How was it with the number of salmon coming up? Did it increase?
Um, Mister, Mister Chairman, board member, uh, Vanstone, um. Uh, looking at the, the data uh, that's available so far, it's actually. It's given, given the good water year you would expect, but uh, the way that schnook. Their life history is they spend about three or more years in the ocean. So uh, fish that are coming back this year, um, outmigrated sometime in twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen. And um, unfortunately, I, I think ocean conditions were, were pretty poor in those, in those years, so we actually saw less fish come back this year than the previous two years. Um, according to data that I've seen so far.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Okay, great. We're gonna ask John to stay up there and talk about a series of uh, water transaction that versus working out.
Mister Chairman, could I ask one quick question for you?
Yes.
What is the average uh, annual cost for purchase water at L six? Is that something that, that we know?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, um. Uh, Mister Spurda, that's. That price changes per, per year, obviously. So on, on a good water year, um, the cost can be a couple thousand dollars. Um, and in twenty twenty-one, and then, and remind you, so like the, the current, the current structure right now, we have permanent and we have annual agreements. So we have a series, I think, I think it's right now being permanent subordination agreements. That um, the board has purchased a conservation easement um, based on uh, current valuation of, of irrigated ground in the lower limelight, um. And the current going rate for a permanent easement is a hundred thousand dollars per CFS. So once we purchase those, um, that, you know, there's no more additional cost. Um, other than annual administration costs for the water master to administer that water. So if we bought water, say two thousand eight, at a hundred thousand dollars per CFS, we, the board has um. A, a right essentially to subordinate up to one hundred days per irrigation season for that water purchase back two thousand eight. But there's a, also a series of annual agreements that a water user can, can back out at any time. And that right now is a hundred dollars per CFS per day. So on a bad watering year like twenty twenty-one, uh, where our um, subordination need was, was a hundred and twenty-three days for the entire irrigation season. Um, that, that cost of water, um, for the annual agreements and administration was a hun- was over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For the twenty twenty-one irrigation season. Um, this year, I'm expecting that price to be, you know, probably less than fifty thousand dollars, because honestly, we haven't just needed to buy that much water at L six, so, um. That again, it could vary year to year depending on, and that, and that's another reason why, um, I think it's important to, to rethink L six, um, given the cost of water, um. If, if this was designed in a way that if the channel, you know, the checkup dam and some bypass channel were engineered in a way that. Made use of the natural water or the minimum stream of water, that maybe we didn't need to, you know, we had this passage, um. That didn't require minimum stream of water to be purchased, um, that would reduce the, the annual cost as well. Um, so I think this is an opportunity to, to rethink, rethink this whole. This, this the pinch point reach between L six and L seven. And I'll try to create a more, a more fish friendly fish channel that doesn't, that you know, still, still administer water rights. But allow fish passage at all blows that will reduce our overall cost per year in the long run.
This, this the last statement on that is, with that being said, I think that also makes it look better for biodiversity. And also recharge, so if we have more water in the whole, the basin. There wouldn't be the need for quite as much water being purchased.
Good point as well.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we're good. Okay, uh, water transactions.
Yes, okay, so, so that was uh, one non-action item. I've got three action items for you and then we'll round out with another status update, non-action item. Uh, first action item for your consideration, um, is a funding resolution to renew a water transaction on Nap Creek, which forms. Uh, in part, the headwaters of the middle fork Samir Basin. Uh, since two thousand nineteen, the board has had a lease rental agreement with the water user on Nap Creek One diversion, which can prevent, uh, which can propose, uh. Present a fish barrier for, for uh, migrating adult schnook salmon in this basin. And uh, the water user since twenty nineteen has agreed to at least. Six and a half CFS of their seven CFS water rate, or sorry, seven and a half CFS water rate. Um, into the water supply bank and then. The water board has agreed to a, a landowner payment contract. And last year, uh, and, and back in twenty nineteen, the, the lease agreement and the landowner payment contract were out of sync. The last year, the board uh, heard a funding resolution to uh, agree to a six-year contract uh, with the water supply bank. To uh, allow these, these two agreements to sync up. So this year, I'm, I'm asking for the, the landowner payment contract that expires at the end of this year. Um. And uh, so this, this contract will be renewed from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight. The landowner is uh, will be asked, asking to be compensated at a fair market rate that is based off the NRCS. So productivity of production analysis. And uh, available AUMs on that, on that ground, um. So the proposed uh, compensation rate is about uh, five thousand dollars, or seven thousand dollars per year. And the five-year agreement will not exceed thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, yeah, thank you of your consideration on this one. I'll stand for any questions if there are any.
Questions for John? Uh, just one quick, on this one, where it's six of seven and a half CFS.
Correct.
There'll be uh. An appropriate portion of the hundred nine acres that's dried out.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next one?
So another uh, water supply bank lease rental agreement for consideration. Mister Chairman members of the board is Little Mud Springs Creek in the Basimera Basin, March of seventy-three. Uh, Little Mud Springs Creek was historically de-watered by the P nine cross ditch. That's uh, was removed uh, through a, a large source fish transaction in two thousand and nine. However, legal water withdrawals in Little Mud Springs Creek still pose a fish barrier, a fish passenger fish barrier and. Um, reduces juvenile rearing habitat capacity in the Basimera. Um, so, um, this is gonna renew uh, an existing five-year agreement, um, that expires at the end of this year. For another five years extending to twenty twenty-eight. And uh, the, the interesting thing about uh, this. Uh, transaction as uh, this, this water user has a, a series of stacked water rights um, on, on, um. The, these pivots and bottom ground here, and through this transaction, we're able to actually clo- fully close uh, the last remaining irrigation diversion. On Little Mud Springs Creek in the full two point two five CFS water right remains in stream. Which eliminates the passage barrier, increase, uh, significant increase to juvenile rearing habitat capacity in this reach. Um, same methodology for uh, landowner compensation, it's proposed as the Nap Creek one, based off NRCS so productivity and A U production potential. And this agreement is gonna be about uh, five thousand dollars per year and not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, for the next five years, and I forgot to mention with the Nap Creek guns are available um, through BPAs, coming these water action program for both of these transactions. And that, same for questions.
Questions on this transaction? What, what?
One more action item for you guys, then that pretty busted. Okay, so we got uh, acquisition potential opportunity on Hat Creek. Um, this, this is another creek that uh, should be well, um. Well remembered by, by this, by this group here. And since it's an acquisition, I thought I'd have another slide deck with some pretty pictures just to uh, drive the point home, uh, the importance of this transaction. So, uh, Hat Creek, uh, these water rights have been, the proposed uh, transaction is on uh, three, three senior irrigation waters at Creek. That have been rented to the bank continuously since two thousand and four. And uh, this is pertinent to sixty-eight irrigated acres and two point five C of, CFS. And since two thousand and seven, the current landowners, uh, the Storey Kyzers have donated the cost of the rental, um, in-stream rental to the boys minimum stream flow at the mouth Hat Creek. Uh, for example, some of the flows that this uh, helps me are the twelve CFS monthly minimum stream flow in April and the sixteen CFS minimum stream flow in September. And a fun fact, uh, the Hat Creek uh, lease, lease uh, rental agreement was the very first transaction funded by the Clumby Basin Water Action Program. After reviewed by the Northwest Power and Conservation Council back in two thousand and four. And since that time, uh, this transaction has been renewed a series of ten times, uh, most recently in uh, December twenty twenty-two. And uh, oddly enough, um. Before the, the original owner of the transaction, Brett Crabtree, uh, sold his property to the Storey Kyzers in two thousand and five. Somebody, I'm not sure who, asked for evaluation of, of uh, the, one of those three water rates, um, I'm proposing to acquire today. Um, and they evaluated that at twenty thousand dollars. And just wanted to keep that value in mind as we, as we move along here. So twenty years of uh, water rentals, you expect, we see some fish benefit by now, and um, that is indeed the case, and. Um, just to briefly uh, recap, uh, back in two thousand and three, the Idaho Fishing Game and Ice Stream Program conducted a tributary report. That documented uh, present bull trout stronghold in the creek. Um, importantly, there was no uh, invasive brook trout observed in any of the seventeen uh, transects that were surveyed back in two thousand and three. There was steelhead uh, spawning and rearing observed and uh, spring summer run schnook rearing observed. And over the last few years, a concerted effort by regional partners. Um, have turned their attention back to Hat Creek to try to reaffirm some of these two thousand and three findings. And indeed, we have uh, seen that resident bull trout are, are, are still just as abundant as they were back in two thousand and three. There are still no brook trout in the upper reaches of Hat Creek. And uh, uh, steelhead remained spawning um, in the, the lower mile and a half Hat Creek, um. This picture on the left here is a series of cascade's that um, are in this uh. Very confined canyon section of Hat Creek that is unfortunately cut off and adjuvantous uh, distribution. Um, in the upper reaches of Hat Creek where we're actually renting water and stream right now on the Storey Kaiser property. But the, the lower reaches of Hat Creek here, um, are still uh, very productive and adjuvantous spawning area habitat. And uh, just, just a note here, so this is a picture from August of two thousand and twenty-three. When there was about uh, ten to fifteen CFS in, in Hat Creek at the mouth. And that was with little to no irrigation use at all in the basin, and the minimum stream flow for the month, uh, month of August is twenty-three CFS. And the point being is that any reason to use Hat Creek would likely uh, either de-water the creek or reduce uh, flow is enough to uh, be. Biologically significant to uh, Samir recovery efforts in that area. So posing, um, the, this opportunity came about because the Storey Kyzers um, have owned the property since early two thousands. Uh, they're retired school teachers from Minnesota. And um, they're in their seventies and early eighties, and frankly, they just uh, can't make out of Hat Creek as much as they would like to anymore. And the family being back in Minnesota is not interested in this Hat Creek property. Um, this is a unique um, public in-holding. That has a public road access and a potential for airship development. And um, you know, would uh, probably serve either a, um. You, either, either irrigation uh, reuse or uh, for either um, agricultural production or, or a hunting property to try to attract. Um, elk and, and other being to this, this uh, place of use here. And as I mentioned, this, this is very good, not been irrigated since the two thousand and four timeframe. Um, so listing the property is inevitable here with the Storey Kaiser is looking to divest um, in the next uh, twelve, eighteen months. And um, I'm proposing the water resource board acquire the three water rights that, that are currently leased in the water supply bank. Back in June two uh, uh, back in June of this year, I used unspent programmatic funds, uh, the base transaction program to fund an appraisal of the Hack Creek property, which is two hundred and forty acre ranch. Um, and we did a before and after analysis, looking at the ranch with them about those senior irrigation water rights. And the total value of the property is one point five million dollars. Which breaks down to uh, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, or thirty-three percent of the total value of the property being comprised by those water rights. Which is about two hundred and eleven thousand dollars best. Or about seventy-eight hundred dollars per year, you get a day here. And just for some context on this price here, uh, this property at the mouth of Hat Creek. As in this picture here, this was listed in twenty twenty-two at two million dollars. But sold for a million dollars, or we're asking at three million dollars. And importantly, the water rates and at the mouth here are junior to the Hat Creek, or to the Hat Creek rights that we're currently leasing. And there's no legal road access to this property. Um, back in, on August of this year, I proposed this transaction to the Clumby Basin Water Protection Program for Northwest Power Council review. Um, of this uh, five hundred and thirty thousand dollar uh, purchase price plus a uh, permanent in-stream rental that is about fifty thousand dollars. And uh, included in this was a match from the Idaho Core Transaction Fund using unspent programmatic funds from prior fiscal years. And that amounted one hundred and twenty-four, one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of cost here between the Accord and the Clumby Basin, Clumby Basin Transaction Program. I'm just hedging my bets that uh, perhaps BPA will cover this uh, this, you know, half million dollar, more than half million dollar price tag. Um, I, I've secured a, a project ranking from the upper end Washington program. Uh, technical team to be able to go forth and ask for additional funding if necessary through NOAA Pacific Coast Sam Recovery Fund. Um, in applications that are due in November of this year. Uh, but again, I, I, we might not need that at all if it BPA decides to fund this upgrade. Um, and I think that's everything I have, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for John? Oh, you got one? Another question, all right. I think, I think we're good, thank you.
All right, and my last uh, update, and this is an evolving uh, proposal, um. Brought forth by, by one of our audience members, Mister James Woodykirk, um. Just a couple of weeks ago, uh, James approached uh, the Forest Service about um, an in-holding that he has, um. Uh, way up, about eight miles up uh, Big Timber Creek in the Swan Basin area, um, tried to divest this property. And posed uh, to convey this uh, private property to the forest. And um, if, if this group is willing, uh, take on, take on the, the water rights. Um, there's four water associated with the property, uh, Tumo Senior being a nineteen-ten water right for two CFS, a pertinent eighty-nine acres. And a nineteen-point-two water right, a pertinent forty-eight CFS for twenty-four acres. There's two nineteen-eighty rates stacked on both of those POUs, uh, one-four CFS as well. Um, now, although this water rate is very far from the current transaction reach on Big Timber Creek that we talked about earlier. Um, as I mentioned, the, the current administration issues with the, the transactions at the mouth is that they're both under, both the transaction under pivot. Which, as I mentioned, because of the, the high altitude in the space, and these pivots can't turn on sometime until June and the irrigation season starts in, in March. So this current ground is under flood, could be called in stream to help meet either the water and stream flow reaching CFS. Um, or help keep that um, lower reach connected, um, while the senior water rights that are coming out of the limelight. Can't physically call for their water in Big Timber because they're not on. Um, alternatively, besides the in-stream flow, um, as we saw yesterday, there are. A lot of good recharge opportunities in the Big Timber Basin. And I think this could be an opportunity to, you know, be the first water transaction in the basin geared towards management recharge. Um, either into the sponge or as um, other, other. Or recharge bits that are, that exist in the basin as well, so, um, I don't have. Or recharge pits that are that exist in the basin as well, so um I don't have a current ask right now, but uh. Working with Western was Western River Conservancy to secure appraisal. And um when I once I have a dollar amount, I'll submit this proposal as well to the Commemoration Transaction Program for funding and um. Then come back for a funding proposal, but uh it's emerging. Uh, opportunity that I just wanted to bring to this group um as it, as it's evolving.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right, you, John, very well.
Brian?
Okay, if you're at uh non-action items for discussion.
Anything else anybody wants to bring up during the work session? Okay, all right, where's that motion to adjourn? Move in second, second, okay, all better say hi, all right, hi. We hope we're adjourned to one more, and thank you very much.
Watch is.
Here, Jennifer?